Welcome to our special council meeting. This meeting has been called for the following purposes. Consideration of all unresolved agenda business for the scheduled special council meeting of July 25, 2022. Discussion item at the request of Mayor Brown regards the city's position to prohibit payments in cases of sexual harassment allegations. Discussion item at the request of Mayor Brown, city position to prohibit non-disclosure agreements, otherwise known as NDAs related to sexual harassment allegations. Discussion item at the request of Mayor Brown, city position to prohibit settlements with victims of sexual assault complaints without public disclosure and council approval. Discussion item at the request of Mayor Brown regards to trucking 15-minute waiting areas. Minutes of Planning Development Committee meeting July 25. Notice of motion, remandatory municipal act training, moved by Councilor Palaschi, seconded by Councilor Santos. Discussion item requesting Councilors Santos regards to nepotism policy, public disclosure.
That's Councilor Singh?
So, Councilor Singh, okay. Nepotism, public. He said Councilor Singh. We can adjust that when it gets to it. Discussion item requesting Mayor Brown, legal cost coverage. Discussion item requesting Mayor Brown, members of council pay deductions. The business includes the agenda items 10.21 is required by the municipal act 2001 regarding the declaration of a vacant council office. Section 262-1 municipal act states the council shall at its next meeting declare the office to be vacant. This report has been included on the agenda for the special meeting, being the next available meeting of council since the vacancy occurred in June. Under councils' meeting rules, no other business can be considered at this special meeting. We will begin today's meeting with the city clerk calling for the role and attendance at today's meeting.
Members of council, I will call your name, please indicate your presence. Councilor Dillon. Councilor Singh. Councilor Fortini. Councilor Maderos.
Here.
Councilor Bowman.
Present.
Councilor Palaschi. Councilor Willens.
You have.
Councilor Visante.
Present.
Councilor Santos.
Present.
And Mayor Brown.
Present.
All 10 members are present.
Okay, we're now at item two, approval of the agenda. We have a motion moved by Councilor Santos and seconded by Councilor Fortini to approve the agenda. Instead of seeking, record a vote for this item, I'll ask, so if you want to do the very, okay.
Yes, through you, Mr. Mayor. So there's a few updates to the agenda I just wish to provide. Item 7.4 is a group of delegations regarding some planning and development matters from its June 20 meeting. There is an updated presentation from Anthony Mason that will be published with the revised agenda later this morning. We have an added audio delegation from Don Naylor, a Brampton resident. And the group of delegates have requested a change to the order of delegations to be first. John Brennan, which is a video delegation, followed by Amric Alawalia in person. Cheryl Roy, if she is in attendance, to delegate, followed by Don Naylor, an audio delegation. And then finally, Anthony Mason, an in-person delegation that includes a presentation and video. We also have an added delegation that will be identified as 7.8 from Yvonne Squires, Brampton resident, regarding item 16.1, which is the Brampton U audit update. And the mayor's discussion items 1610, 1611, and 1612. We have an additional added delegation that will be identified as 7.9 from Azad Singh Goyat, Brampton First Foundation, in regard to the mayor's discussion items 1610, 1611, and 1612. And finally, item 19.6, which is on the meeting agenda, is closed session. It's an open meeting exception under section 239-2C of the municipal act, proposed pending acquisition or disposition of land by the municipality or local board. It was a property acquisition matter that was on the June 15 scheduled city council meeting. This item is to be withdrawn and removed from the agenda as it's no longer required, given circumstances have changed since this item was originally listed on the June 15 agenda. Those are the updates, Mr. Mayor.
And in light of the fact that, I should say, our CEO had a heart attack. We're very happy that he is in good health now and recovered. He probably shouldn't even be at work today, but he is very dedicated, so thank you, Paul Morrison, for that. There may be some questions in regards to 1610, 1611, 1612, so if we could have that after delegations, in case there's any questions for the CEO on that. And then the item on the 413, I don't believe that's necessary, as that will be dealt with at regional council, so if we could remove that item. Peter, how do we do that?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So that is item 16, bear with me here, 16.8, so it'll be proposed to be withdrawn from the agenda.
And the lottery license matter, I believe that that might be, is that resolved now for the lacrosse?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. There is a process that's underway with the affected group to proceed. They don't have a license yet, but there is a process underway for them to hopefully achieve a license.
So do we need a motion today? No, so we can remove that item too. Nope, okay. Anyone opposed to the motion?
Or you can just ask all in favor.
All in favor? Motion carried. Councilor Bowman.
Thank you, oh, sorry. Yeah, thanks very much, Mr. Mayor. I just want to look for direction from the city clerk, because I wasn't aware that it was an item to do with Brampton Lacrosse. My son sits on the Board of Directors of Brampton Lacrosse, so I don't know. Because it's being voted on as part of the agenda, do I need to declare a conflict with?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. That will be a decision that you'll have to make, and I can't provide advice on that. I can tell you that what I understand the mayor's proposed discussion item was, is there is an entity called the Brampton Excelsiors Lacrosse Club or Association that has applied for a license. There were some issues in terms of whether, who were the Board of Directors for that entity. And we are working with a group of individuals to ensure that they comply with the provincial requirements for charitable gaming, as well as the city's lottery licensing bylaw.
But being pulled from the agenda, would I still have a conflict on voting on the agenda?
There is no item on the agenda to, for debate.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
This takes us to declarations of interest under the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. Do any members have a declaration of kinney interest under the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act for any matter to be considered on today's agenda? Seeing none, clerk will note for the meeting minutes. Okay, this takes us to adoption of minutes. Minutes, city council, special meeting May 31st. Minutes, city council, regular meeting June 1st. Minutes, city council, special meeting June 7th. We're now ready to move on to the next item, public business on today's council agenda item for minutes. This repeats itself, Peter, is that intentional? Are there any speakers on this item? I have a motion moved by Councilor Willens, seconded by Councilor Singh, to approve the minutes as published.
Record a vote, Mr. Mayor.
Record a vote.
A recorded vote is requested on, so we are just doing, I just want to clarify, there are three sets of minutes. Are we voting on all sets of minutes, all three, or just the May 31st? All three, as shown on the screen. And there is an amendment in the wording, members can see that on the screen if you can just scroll up. Because of the court decision and the quashing of a resolution and bylaw, the minutes of the May 31st meeting are adopted and published with the exception of Resolution C 168 and the confirming bylaw 129A, in accordance with the court ruling. All in favor of adopting the three sets of minutes, as with the motion as shown on the screen, please indicate. Councilor Dillon.
Councilor Dillon.
If members would like to stand, because we're all present, that's fine. All in favor, please stand to be counted. Showing in favor is Councilor Santos, Councilor Visante, Councilor Palaschi, Councilor Willens, Councilor Bowman, Councilor Maderos, Councilor Singh, Councilor Dillon, Mayor Brown, and Councilor Fortini. That carries unanimously 10 to 0. My apologies, it's been a while since all members have been present in chambers.
Okay, so this takes us to, you need to do this part right here, Peter, again?
No, we've got all three separate minutes.
Normally, for a special meeting with a specific purpose defined, the consent, the consent motion is not part of a special council meeting. Given the special meeting agenda includes a number of business items from the previous meetings that did not proceed, if council wishes to consider a consent motion for some of these matters, we can do so with the consent of council or by procedural motion to identify approval as part of the consent motion. I'll start by reading the relevant items, the members can identify any item to be held for debate. 8.1, government relations update. 8.2, government relations update. 10.2, staff report, Castlemore Plaza. 10.23, staff report, Brampton Appeal Tribunal. 10.24, staff report, Ontario Cannabis Legalization Implementation Fund. 10.25, staff report, request full-time labor employment lawyer. Hold. Councilor Singh. 10.31, staff report, departmental staffing level benchmarking. 10.32, staff supplemental report, Habitat for Humanity GTA. Staff report, Brampton signed for tourism promotion. 10.35, staff report, request to begin procurement data governance technology. Staff report, emancipation park. 10.41, staff report, actually, I'm going to hold the emancipation park one, just to get an update. Staff report, Brampton plant revised adoption timelines. Staff report, subdivision release and assumption register plan 43M North Bram Development, Inc. 10.62, staff report, re-subdivision release and assumption register plan 43M 1959 Fulton Bridge Estates. 10.63, staff report, subdivision release and assumption register plan 43M 2005-9 El Dorado Estates. 10.64, staff report, subdivision release and assumption register plan 43M Can of Properties Limited. 10.65, staff report, always stop, various streamline, Ward 5 and 10. 10.71, staff report, transit electrification resource requirements. 10, 12.1, minutes, Planning and Development Committee, June 6. That's not the one we need to hold, is it? The Crystal Homes is June 20th, right? 12.3 minutes, Audit Committee. 12.5 minutes, Committee of Council. Committee of Council, June 22nd? 12.6 minutes, Planning Committee and Development Committee, July 25th. 13.2, staff report, Habitat for Humanity. Organizational structure, municipal comparisons. 13.4, staff report, city initiated official plan amendment zoning bylaw. 14.3, correspondence, Patrick Harrington, Erdem Berlus. 14.6, correspondence, Bonnie Braves Community. 14.7, correspondence, Aaron Platt, Davies How. 12.4, Springburg tertiary credit valley. For 12.4?
Yeah.
We're holding.
Sorry, through you, Mr. Mayor. That reference is in item 12.4, so you correctly identified 14.7. It's correspondence relating to 12.4. 12.4 is not under consideration for consent, as there's delegations.
Okay, good. Correspondence from Gary Tischler. Closed session. Minutes, city council, May 31st. Closed session, city council, June 1st. Open meeting exception 239-2F of the municipal act. 19.8, closed session minutes, special audit committee. 19.9, closed session note to file. 19.11, open meeting exception under 239. 1912, open meeting exception 239. 1913, open meeting exception 239-2F of the municipal act. 1950, open meeting exception 239-2ENF municipal act. The clerk will summarize those items to be included on the consent motion.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. For simplicity, I'll identify just the items that are held, with the balance as set out by the mayor to be approved as part of the consent motion. 10.2.5, held by Councilor Singh, staff report, request for full-time labor and employment lawyer staff complement. 10.3.2, held by Councilor Visante, staff supplementary report on Habitat for Humanity GTA, financial relief for 1524 Countryside Drive and 25 William Street. 10.3.5, held by Councilor Palaschi, staff report, request to begin procurement data governance technology solution for a five-year period. 10.3.6, held by Mayor Brown, staff report regarding emancipation park. 12.5, minutes from Committee of Council of June 22nd, held by Councilor Bowman. 12.6, held by Councilor Visante, minutes, Planning and Development Committee of July 25th. 13.2, held by Councilor Visante, staff report regarding Habitat for Humanity, financial relief associated with the Countryside Drive and William Street properties. And finally, it is 19.15 in the closed session agenda, held by Councilor Santos, an open meeting exception under section 239-2ENF of the municipal act. Litigation, potential litigation vice that is subject to solicitor-client privilege, a litigation matter. Those are the items to be held, with the balance of the items identified by the mayor only for consent. And Mr. Mayor will proceed with a recorded vote. All those?
Just for clarification. Just for clarification, did we hold, Mr. Clerk, 12.4, planning minutes, June 20th?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, yes. Those minutes are not for consideration under the consent motion, because there's delegations and other items.
And then also, for closed session, did we hold 1910 and 1914?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, 1910 and 1914 were not identified for consideration as consent, as I believe there are some updates to be provided by staff.
Okay, thank you very much.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. All those in favor of the consent motion, please stand to be counted. Showing in favor of consent is Councilor Dillon, Councilor Singh, Councilor Fortini, Councilor Maderos, Mayor Brown, Councilor Bowman, Councilor Palaschi, Councilor Willens, Councilor Visante, Councilor Santos. The motion carries unanimously 10 to 0.
Did you need, who moved that, or no? I think I said Councilor Willens and Councilor Singh. Okay, this takes us to announcements. In recognition that today is a long agenda, we're not going to go through the normal two minutes for each proclamation, given the fact that most of them have passed. On July 19th, we had the longest day of smiles. On June 19th, we had World Sickle Cell Day. On June 19th, we had Brampton Pride Day. On June 21st to 26th, we had National Felt Bottomed Technicians Recognition Week. On June 21st, we had National Indigenous Peoples' Day. On July 5th, we had National Injury Prevention Day. And on July 31st, we had National Ride for the Cause Day. And I don't see here on my list, but I know one was sent to me, is, this Saturday is the 60th anniversary of Jamaica's independence. Do we do that proclamation after the fact, or can we add that to the list to be on the agenda today?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. It could be added to the list if that's the will of council. I don't know if that one was tracking for the August 10th council meeting.
There's a proclamation to, yeah. Trustee McDonald reached out to me to make sure the city recognizes it, so if we can just add that. And for those wondering at home, normally we would have the clock tower dimmed to celebrate a milestone like that. And I know members of the community asked if we'd be doing so. There's some renovations with the clock tower, so it can't be dimmed in those colors, but there will be some recognition. Oh, any vote to add it? Anyone opposed to adding the Jamaica, 60th anniversary of Jamaica's independence? Hearing no objections, added. This takes us to public delegations. And we're starting, Peter, with delegation from Jesse White and Justin McLarty, Legal Counsel, Peel Standard Condominium Corporation, 15 Sunpac Boulevard.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Justin McLarty is present. Kiran, if you can bring Justin into the session. And Justin, you are in the session. You have up to five minutes to address counsel on this item, which is identified as 13.1, Planning and Development Committee Recommendation, PDCO 75, regarding 711 and 15 Sunpac Boulevard. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. For the record, my name is Justin McLarty, a partner with Miller Thompson, and I'm the lawyer for PSEC 1046. The condominium corporation administers the lands at 711 and 15 Sunpac Boulevard. I'm here to request that council defer consideration of bylaw 102 2022, which would amend the zoning for 711 and 15 Sunpac. Reposed changes need the input and approval of the individual union owners and the corporation, which requires some additional time. As an update, we did have a meeting of the owners on July 20th. I remember continuing to gather their consent and input on proposed zoning bylaw changes. A defer of the item would permit those discussions to continue and allow for input from the condo community that will be impacted by those changes as the lands continue to be developed. I thank you for your consideration of this request, and would be happy to answer any questions.
Councilor Maderos moved receipt of the delegation. Seconded by Councilor Fortini. Anyone opposed? Hearing none. It's approved. This takes us to 7.2, delegation from Sayed Kamel Sarwar, CEO of Umbria Development Group.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I do not see Sayed in the session, I just want to verify. We have not seen Sayed join, so Sayed is not present.
Okay, we can go to the next item. Which is Sukhi Badwan, Brampton resident, 12.4, application to amend the rezoning bylaw, draft plans of division, Gagnon Walker, for 8265 Churchill Road.
Good morning, councilors, and good morning, Mayor. This is an item that was briefly addressed on July, sorry, June 20th meeting. This is an application which is city-initiated to amend the zoning bylaw and the draft plan of subdivision. As I indicated, it's city-initiated. Currently, there's a requirement to amend the zoning bylaw before granting any approval to the builder. What city is proposing is this, that the requirement of amending the bylaw before approval be deleted. So what's, as an incident, how I say it? There's an application which is initiated by a builder, which is before the planning staff. And there's a requirement that zoning law be amended before granting any approval. But city initiates a proposal, you don't need to meet that requirement. That's troubling. City staff should be assisting to an extent to help the builder to comply with the bylaws. City staff should not allow the changing of the bylaw to suit the builder. So it's just like, what I would submit is this, this commit, council should not allow this initiated, city-initiated proposal. There are a number of reasons we discussed on June 20th meeting. There's a lack of public input. Last time we discussed, this was notice that was put on Guardian newspaper. And there was some discussion that some notice should be sent to the residents. Residents have not received any notice from the city after June 20th. When the city planners were here, this issue was canvassed. The second reason is, there is no justifiable reason to, at this point of time, there's no study done. There is no report that indicates the benefit of bringing this application. When these bylaws were made by your brother's history counselors in the past, they must have thought about it. The city must have thought about it. To change the bylaws now, amend the bylaw, there has to be solid, valid reason. And especially when the residents oppose this application. The second submission I would make is this, in event, for any reason, if this council ever allows this application to be passed through council, it should not apply to the present application before the city or before the planning. You cannot, you cannot have applicant for the application and change the rules to suit the applicant. The applicant should comply with, the builder should comply with the rules. The rule should not be bent to suit specific builders. The current application, I would argue, is unfair. It's not in residence, what residents want. And you'd argue clearly, there is some apprehension of bias in favor of a builder. When city staff started reaching out to the builder and saying, "Oh, you don't need to follow those rules, we're going to change the rule." So that's what I'm going to submit on this one. On June 20th, we don't have anyone from Planning Commission, sorry, Planning Department over here. On June 20th, this issue was raised, and I remember Councilor Bowman asked some question for clarification to the staff. In all fairness, Mr. Bowman did not take any position, which is a fair thing to do. The question was specifically asked, one question that was asked is, can the staff make sure this agenda item does not come before this present council? The second question was asked, how is it affecting the present application? And there was no straightforward answer. I was told to follow with Mr. Parsons, I did follow up, I did not receive any positive response. It's just more diplomatic, we are considering, we have not made any decisions. But that was June 20th. So later on, one of the residents brought to my attention a letter which clearly indicates that the city staff sometime in March 23rd had already told the builder in writing by email that you don't need to comply with this requirement. Even before the city council has passed that amendment. So it's just, that's wrong. And that's the email, I am not going, if, I can give the copy of that email to the councilors, but it's generated from Planning Development, Economic Development Office of City of Brampton in March, where the staff has already decided that that's what builder will be doing. So that's what I'm going to say on this agenda item. So this agenda item touches essence holding development and I believe the counselor and regional counselor uh from Ward three and four are pretty aware of the area. This is a densely populated, sorry, densely treated area. And last, uh on June twentieth, another question rose which planner could not answer. I'm going to answer that question today. One of the question that was asked is how many trees are there? How many will be cut? So as per the arborist report, which is online, there are two hundred forty-four trees on the footprint.
Mr. Badwan, your five minutes is up, so if you please wrap up.
Two sentences, okay. As per the arborist report, there are two hundred forty-four trees on the footprint. Two hundred twenty-seven of the two hundred forty-four will be, have to be cut. That's ninety-three percent of tree head we cut. There are approximately one of hundred and three walnut trees. Out of, sorry, one of seven total walnut trees, one of three walnut trees we cut. So ninety-seven of walnut trees will be cut to accommodate this development. Thank you. Subject to any questions.
Mr. Mayor, um if there are any questions, just, there seems to be an issue with the request to speak system.
Any questions?
Counsel Visante was on the board first before Counsel Bowman, but there's an issue that we're just trying to rectify.
Oh, I see Counsel Bowman. So Counsel Visante, you said this first? Okay, Counsel Visante.
Your mic is live, Counselor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Counsel Santos and I have had opportunity together with Mayor Brown to um meet with some of the residents of Ward five and we've had a lot of discussions about the Springbrook tertiary plan. And I think everyone is in agreement that um we would like to see further consultation uh happen between the city and the residents and the stakeholders on this. And so I had originally held uh item twelve point four of today's agenda for the purpose of asking if staff, and I don't know if we can vote on that now or if we vote on it later, uh looking at how staff can do more consultation with the residents with respect to Springbrook uh for particularly the residents in Ward five, north of Queen Street. And we would like to see that happen, so uh Mr. Clerk, if you can just assist in uh us drafting an appropriate motion to that effect, but essentially for the Springbrook tertiary plan to be referred back to staff for additional consultation with the residents of the area.
So through you, Mr. Mayor. Springbrook community is a, is a large area and there are a number of applications that are on the agenda, a number of delegations. There's, there is a group of delegations coming up, so um I'm going to suggest that we continue with the delegations and then we'll have to work with planning to identify specifically what recommendations in the item twelve point four Planning and Development Committee minutes of June twentieth need to be referred back, because I believe it is certainly more than one.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Through you, Mr. Mayor. Um who do we have from planning here?
Through, through you, Mr. Mayor. I, I believe Gerdeep Core is present from planning, as is, I do see um a few planners. I see uh Andrew McNeil, I see Steve Ganish. Um I'm not sure if anybody from planning wants to uh identify themselves to be available to answer any questions.
Okay, well, I'll ask the question and then whoever can answer it for me. The um, the particular walnut, walnut road um that we're discussing here now, that was uh on the agenda, it was, as far as I remember, it was the first public meeting, correct? It was not something that the city was going to be passing that night?
Yes, through the mayor, this is David Vandenberg, Management Development Services, and that's correct. It was on the agenda as a public meeting item.
Okay, so there's still lots of opportunity, thanks, David. There's still lots of opportunity for us to revisit that. Uh I know Counsel Visante wants to look at the tertiary plan and it probably should be looked at on both north and south of Queen. Um but there's still plenty of opportunity to, with respect to this particular development, because it was myself who asked the questions, whether it would, it came, I think, three items after the first one, which was the change. Um and I asked how it would be affected, so I do think that needs to go back for another public meeting. So that's altogether possible, David?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I do see, Counsel Santos, did you have your name to ask questions? I see you on the list, online?
Oh, no, that was from before.
Mayor, um if there's no other speakers on this, my advice will be is we just received the delegation. Um when we get to item twelve point four, at Counselor Visante's proposal to possibly refer back to staff or refer back possi- uh possible recommendations that relate to the Springbrook area, um we'll work planning staff to identify specifically which recommendations. But there is another group of delegations, the next item seven point four, which speaks to other development proposals in that area.
Okay.
So we should just have a motion just to receive the delegation from.
Motion to receive the delegation, moved by Counsel Bowman, second by Counsel Visante. All in favor? Motion carries. This takes us to item.
Mr. Mayor, this is item seven point four, so there is a group of delegations. Um and as I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, uh the requested order has been uh changed. So the first delegation is from John Brennan. John has sent, I know John is online, but I understand. John, we're just going to unmute your mic for a moment. I, I just want to confirm that you still wish to use your video delegation and not speak directly to council?
Yes, please.
Okay. So Kieran, if you could just give me presenter and then we will play John's video delegation.
Welcome to the beautiful historic hamlet of Springbrook. What we have here is a failure to communicate. There have been many public meetings, garage meetings, local gatherings, petitions submitted, where collectively thousands of signatures have been gathered. Our residents are discouraged and believe that no one in our city council is listening or cares. At the marathon meeting on June the twentieth, many presentations were delivered by our disgruntled residential delegates who passionately delivered a unified message to Brampton City Council. Reject high density, high-rise development to save our beautiful historic hamlet of Springbrook and Queen Street West lands in wards four, five, and six. The chairman of that meeting, Counselor Maduros, repeatedly stated, "City council does not have the authority to turn down an application." As city staff have the responsibility to review and submit all applications supposedly suitable to city council for their approval, then who communicates and protects our residents' best interests during this process? Applications that are accepted by city staff are not communicated adequately to our local residents. This was confirmed at the city meeting when city staff advised, when considering an application, the Planning Act is their only guideline to inform local residents of an application and then publish it in the Brampton Guardian. The notification rules set out in the Planning Act are not adequate enough and could be manipulated to seat developers' applications. Those rules are a detriment to the local residents as notifications could be restricted to only apply to the fewest number of residents possible or none at all, which has been the case. Why? This causes considerable harm to our unsuspecting residents who have not been adequately informed. We live in a world of internet communications. Most local residents are technically savvy but don't read or receive the Brampton Guardian. The city of Brampton appears antiquated and are unsympathetic to our residents' best interests. We feel blindsided as there's no transparency. The following is an excerpt from the City of Brampton Springbrook Design Guidelines from January two thousand and eight and further reviewed by city council on Monday, March the fourth, two thousand and nineteen. This is the cover of the Community Design Guidelines from two thousand and eight. The development guidelines for Springbrook specify, "A selection of upscale traditional architectural styles derived from the classical periods of architecture, Georgian, Tudor, Victorian, French, eclectic, et cetera, will be promoted to generate visually appealing streetscapes." It further provides that the design of each building should have distinguishing elements characteristic of a single identifiable architectural style and that incompatible styles in close proximity to each other shall be avoided, achieving a consistent level of design quality. This is the cover of the public meeting in March the fourth, two thousand and nineteen, chaired by Counselor Maduros and vice chaired by Counselor Fortini. Future land use guidelines. From January two thousand and nineteen, the city used taxpayer money to retain consultant WSP Canada Group Limited to guide future land use and development proposals within the Springbrook settlement area. The Brampton City Staff Report that was shared at the council meeting on March the fourth, two thousand and nineteen indicated that consultants recommended and the city planners supported the following. Low-density development. Hamlet residential development. Hamlet mixed use, which consists of at-grade commercial development that frames the streetscape. The report recommended that when it came to the segment of Queen Street West, redevelopment within the Springbrook settlement area should be compatible with existing rural uses within the hamlet. In closing, why did these zoning guidelines change without our knowledge? To reconcile our residents, Brampton City Council needs to reject high-density, high-rise developments to save our beautiful historic hamlet of Springbrook and the Queen Street West lands in wards four, five, and six. Thank you for your time.
Members of council, the next registered delegation.
Sorry, uh city clerk, just on a point of privilege, Mr. Mayor, if I can just very quickly. In the video refers to that Counsel Maduros said that council does not have the power to stop applications or oppose applications. That's not correct. Uh what I did say is that the last right of appeal is with the Ontario Municipal Board, uh so just to be factually correct. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The next registered delegation is Amrik Singh Alawalia, Brampton resident. Amrik, can you please come forward? You have up to five minutes to address counsel.
I am Amrik Alawalia. We have been living in uh Links Lane, Brampton for the last fourteen years. Thank you, Mayor and councilors, for your time. I appreciate it. Historic hamlet of Springbrook and Queen Street West in wards four, five, and six. As you just saw in the previous video, high density in the hamlet makes a mockery of the city's development guidelines. High density will destroy the rural setting of the Springbrook hamlet. High density will irreversibly harm the ecology. High density will cause traffic congestion, not envisaged because the combined effect of all the development has not been assessed. Consultation process has lacked transparency, as John mentioned in his video. It has checked the box but totally missed the intent of the process. You have seen dozens of presentations opposing high-density, high-rise developments in this area. Several of your constituents have personally told you before and today that they oppose high-density, high-rise development in this hamlet. Hundreds of your constituents have sent you petitions opposing high-density, high-rise development in this area. Who are you accountable to, Mr. Mayor and councilors? I would suggest the residents, the constituents. They're telling you repeatedly and loudly that you should reject high-density, high-rise development. If you don't listen to the residents, who do you listen to? Mayor Brown assured us on July twentieth and twenty-second that he will side with the constituents and vote no to this rezoning application. We applaud it. I strongly urge all councilors to do the same. If, is integrity, accountability, and transparency important to you? I like to think it is. Then you must reject high-density, high-rise development in the historic hamlet of Springbrook and Queen Street West in wards four, five, and six today. Thank you again for your time. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. The ne- uh the next registered delegation was Cheryl Roy, Brampton resident, but we don't know if Cheryl was present. We don't see her online. Oh, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilors, for your time today. I'm speaking as a delegate of the Credit Valley Residents Association. As the saying goes, you have to walk a mile in one's shoes to really know the reality of the situation. Most of you, I mean, our, our councilors do not live in our area. The planners do not live in our area. The decisions they make with these high-rise density buildings will adversely affect our way of life. And most of us moved here a couple of years ago with, with great hopes and dreams of raising our children and grandchildren in a safe environment and our homes were to be our nest egg for our retirement. But almost a year ago, we got a rude awakening that these high-rises were being proposed in our neighborhood, much to our shock and disbelief. For the past ten to twelve months, we from, from, we, the constituents, from wards four and five have been telling you that high-rises, high-density will harm the ecosystem in our wards and endanger the red dace and other species in their habitat. Other environmental groups have raised concerns but have gone unheeded. The high-density high-rises will destroy our countryside setting in the historical hamro- historical hamlet of Springbrook and the surrounding areas. High density will increase traffic congestion. The influx of more people, cars, buses, traffic, noise pollution, et cetera, would, you know, be a nightmare to, to deal with on a daily basis. As my neighbor, uh Amrik Alawalia, said, "High densities and the zoning change makes a mockery of your developmental guidelines." These proposed high-rises are not compatible with the existing established low-density neighborhood that we have. There is a need, there will be an upcoming need for executive housing as I've heard that the MDS um Aero Support Corporation and the Peel Regional Police have plans to move their corporate locations to Brampton West. So there will be a need for senior executives to find suitable housing in the area. Uh high density will have a negative impact on the valuation of the existing detached homes, which is the single biggest investment that many of our residents have. It's their nest egg. The consultation, I agree, the consultation process has lacked transparency. And we feel that the city of Brampton and the planning department is not doing its due diligence, which is a scary scenario for us as a community who will continue to live here and face the harsh consequences, consequences. Over the past ten months, our councilors have met with us, have seen dozens and dozens of presentations, heard heartfelt speeches, received hundreds of personally signed online petitions, received hundreds of emails expressing strong opposition and rejection of these high-density developments. We have continued to meet with them until recently to, to. We have continued to meet with them until recently to make our point clear that we are really, really, really opposed to these developments, I mean, we can't be more explicit than that. Despite the outpouring of opposition and to move forward with these proposals so blatantly is bad governance and un-Canadian, in my opinion, and everyone's opinion here, on this side of the room. We are the taxpayers, the stakeholders, the electorate, and we have the right to have our concerns addressed. We pay a lot of taxes for that, and your salaries. We understand that future developments will happen, we know that progress is inevitable, and we are willing to compromise to housing that is more suitable and compatible to the existing homes in Credit Valley. If so, do you want to leave a legacy of badly-planned Brampton? I urge you, on behalf of the Credit Valley Association, thousands of constituents, which form part of the Credit Valley Residents Association, that you must reject and vote no to these high-rise density developments in wards four, five, and six today. On a side note, I'd like to add that we are seeking legal counsel and representation and will fight you every step of the way. Thank you.
The next registered delegation is from Don Naylor. Don has submitted an audio delegation, which we will play right now.
Good morning, members of council, staff, and members of the audience, perhaps listening from home. My name is Don Naylor. I'm a development consultant and landscape architect, based in Brampton since 1982. I have some comments I'd like to make about this application proposal for rezoning of the Mocon lands and the Rotary Club lands. Ontario's Planning Act is written to include public participation in an open and transparent way. Over the years, developers, lawyers, and planners have figured out how to manipulate the rules to benefit their clients. It is a slow, deliberate process to control the narrative and grind out higher-density development where it simply does not belong. In this case, given the timing of this application in the last couple of years, COVID-19 was also used as an additional weapon to skirt public participation at the secondary and tertiary plan amendment stage. The official plan of the day that designated Mocon and Rotary lands to be included in the overall community as low-rise executive housing should remain the priority of this council, as it was the day we all participated in making sure it was designated as such. These lands should be the anchor, they should be perhaps the most significant, rewarding, and complimentary component of the credit ridge development that took about 10 years to plan, design, and develop. Doesn't make any sense that lands left over after a block plan should be victimized like this to affect the community in a negative way. High-density housing has its place in the urban fabric, but there are places where high-density housing is simply inappropriate. The Mocon land, South Peninsula, perched on a small sliver of land framed on three sides by forested river and stream habitats, is the last place anyone should consider high-rise and appropriate use. The same statement applies to the Rotary Club land. How can anyone consider a zero-lot-line high-rise on Queen Street in Huttonville appropriate? It simply isn't. The environmental report that I reviewed for these sites claimed zero impact on the environment from these proposals. For every information, this is an absurd and irresponsible claim. Development always impacts the environment in multiple ways, if not immediately, then surely eventually. In this case, the water table that supports the forested slopes will be altered, leading to a slow decline in the rare Carolinian forest canopy that embraces it. Human beings, for all we know, remain ignorant of how each little piece of disturbance affects the big picture. Is climate change not enough to make us all realise we are still on the wrong path? The only reason this high-rise development is planned where it's proposed is because someone many years ago destroyed a forest to grow food, which happened across Ontario. Back in the days, there were no rules or bylaws to protect forests, and today, all of these years later, the rules and bylaws we do have are doing little to nothing to protect what forest we have left. There is no hiding from the fact that this proposal is driven by greed and financial gain by a very, very small group, a selfish people who somehow know how to play the game, a game where we, the residents, will all lose in the end. Council has an opportunity today to correct this wrong and make a stand to protect the public and all those people that this irresponsible proposal is going to impact. We, the voters and taxpayers, are sending a clear message to council today. While those in the know understand that this vote is likely already a decided conclusion, there is always a chance that someone, some responsible people, sitting in your chairs, will come to their senses and do the right thing, at least vote for a deferral and redesign We're looking for a responsible solution, a catalyst, a winner, something that everyone could be proud of, as an anchor to the end of Credit Ridge, on this beautiful site with this beautiful environment, that the public should be able to link with and share, the community to be proud of, perhaps some other land uses in here that make it possible for all of us to walk in and out and to this location so that it's part of our community and not an isolated chunk of high-rise that is just going to hurt everyone. I thank you, I appreciate the time.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of council, the next registered delegation is Anthony Mason. Anthony, please come forward.
Mr. Mayor, members of council and staff, good morning. My name is Tony Mason. I'm a resident in Ward Six in Huttonville Estates. And Peter, if we could start with the video when you have a moment?
Okay, through you. Karen, if you could give me back presenter, please. We're going to start with the video. So this is, Tony, this is in your time, you have five minutes, I just want you to make a way of-
I'll try my best.
Just pause it for a moment.
Not my backyard, because it's not just community associations, sometimes it's councillors that you have to work with or caucus members who will say, yeah, I'm all in favour of more housing, we need more housing, but then they're willing to vote against it or campaign against it if it's in their area. How do you deal with the nimbyism both from citizens and fellow elected officials?
Well, I think as mayor, I will tell you the first thing that I've learned, and the premier will obviously speak for himself, but as mayor, what I've learned is the first thing you have to do is tell people what we're not talking about here, which is what we're not talking about fundamentally altering the character of neighbourhoods, because people present it that way. And, you know, I would start, for example, with a lot of the major streets in Toronto where we have two stories, retail at grade, and then on the second floor there's apartments. And if you look at many of the great cities of the world, they have five or six or eight or nine stories of rental above the retail, and I'm talking about streets like the Danforth. If you look at the Danforth now, or you look at Bathurst Street, or you look at a number of other streets, there is just not the development that's taking place, notwithstanding that we invested billions of dollars in transit many years ago. And so I think we have to sort of go through and just bring people along with us, and it's certainly something that I am prepared to do in the coming years because we have to. We have no choice, this is a city that is growing at 70,000 people per year. I'm so happy about that, that people see Toronto and Ontario as a magnet to come and pursue their lives and pursue their opportunities, they have to have a place to live and they have to have a place to work, which means a strong economy and it means building housing, in particular affordable rental housing and ownership, but I think a lot of it's just going to be education, what it is that we're trying to do and what we're not trying to do. We're not trying to upset stable neighbourhoods, we're simply trying to say the status quo is not going to be an option for us in a city that is growing as fast as Toronto, and thank God for that growth. The city, like a lot of counterpart cities, was declining in population, we'd be very worried about that from the standpoint of both the economy and the health of the city overall.
If we can go back to the slides now, Peter? That was a press conference at the end of June with the mayor and with John Tory. The mayor explained, sorry, not the mayor, the premier explained that he wanted to have growth, we need growth, we need to bring in new Canadians, and we need to house them. John Tory spoke using common sense, and this is what we're not doing in this area here in the Credit Valley. Can we advance? Yep. So he's saying that we shouldn't fundamentally change the character of the neighbourhoods that we have created when we fill in little bits of green space. If we can advance there, please. Okay, this is interesting. Okay. The Credit Valley, 20 years ago, I belonged to the Huttonville Residents' Association and together with the Credit Churchview Residents' Association, we're about 150 people. We've built this wonderful area here of about 1,200 homes and they're growing. We're advocating to do more upscale executive housing development in this area, in these fill-in areas instead of high-rises, and the next slide will tell you why. We've learnt since the planning meeting, if we can advance a bit further, that Peel Memorial is going to finally give us a 250-bed wing and a 24/7 emergency department. We're going to have doctors that want to live close to the hospital in nice homes. Where I live, in Huttonville Estates, is only 34 homes. We have eight medical physicians and one vascular surgeon. I only know eight people in the Lionhead Estates, but two of those are medical doctors. And I'm sure the ratio is very similar to where I am, we have lots of medical people and we have new medical people coming in to staff this Peel Memorial expansion that will want nice homes. We've learnt that MDA, the aerospace company, is looking at a new facility on Mississauga Road. We're going to have aerospace engineers who are highly educated, have high incomes, going to want a three-car garage home. With our 1,200 existing homes, over 95% of these have three-car garages. That's how we have created this area. Councillors, you hold a decision-making going forward. If you use your common sense, is the planning department providing you with solid justification from the 10,000-foot perspective, or are they looking at individual pieces of land like the Mocon lands, like the Rotary Green lands? Next slide, please. We have elected you councillors to represent us, to listen, thank you, listen to their logic and their common sense, and use your oversight to balance the top-down pressures that start right the way at the top with Doug Ford. Look at the delegations that we've presented, look at the petitions that we've sent in, and we ask you how engaged we are with the planning that we used in 2000. We've identified lawyers to guide us through the OLT process if we have to go that way, I'm going to suggest otherwise, and we're talking to a planning company that we used 20 years ago when we fought the planning department here, the council of the day, and overturned SCM's trucking depot for Walmart at Mississauga Road and Steels. If I can get the next slide, please. September last year, I asked Kelly Henderson what the area was that they canvassed the existing homes. That's the picture that she sent back to me. If you look at it, basically we have a green field to the west, forest to the east and to the south, we go across Queen Street, we've got stormwater management ponds, a few houses, and we catch the corner of Links Lane there in the Lionhead Estates. That is absolutely atrocious. Nobody knew what was going on at these early stages. So I have a suggestion, and I think it was Mr. Bowman, Jeff Bowman, that suggested to planning that they stopped telling everybody to go to the Brampton Guardian, its last decades or last centuries' form of media. My suggestion is, on your website, put up an area that says if you want to be informed of applications, recommendations, et cetera, put your email address in here. Have a table with wards 1 through 10, indicate which wards you would like to be informed about. Then, whenever a planner comes along with anything that's going to come up at a meeting, application, recommendation, or a council meeting where things are going to be approved, they can simply send out a notification with links to where the report is and everybody will be informed. It beats Brampton Guardian beautifully. It isn't my idea, it's what we use at the Brampton Flying Club. Nice to see you. A fellow director from the Brampton Flyer Club. If I can take the final slide, please. So to continue the suggestions, can we sit with a small group of us, with your planners, and I've not heard anything from economic development. 20 years ago, we did have economic development, they were talking rubbish. Can we look at the whole picture, not these individual pieces of land? Can we then get together with a handful of the Credit Valley residents, work through and try and find workable solutions to Queen Street and the hamlet of Springbrook? Finally, when we've found solutions that work for the city, work for the residents, let's sit with individual developers and go through these solutions and try and find a compromise, because we don't want, and I'm sure the developers and builders don't want to go, to the Ontario Land Tribunal. So that's the recommendation. We use openness, as one of our councillors likes to say. At the end of the day, if you're not representing our needs fairly, then we have an election coming up, it's your choice as to whether we continue to back you. We'd like you to use common sense, and let's all try and move forward together. Next slide, please, Peter, and I'll say thank you here at the mic.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, that concludes the delegations on this item. Councillor Maderos?
Yeah, thank you very much, through you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mason, for the presentation. Just for clarification, our planning department and economic development is one department, so they work together, and many of these applications are shared with all departments. So there isn't, just to correct you, there isn't this separation where you have planners on one side and economic development staff. It's an integrated approach, I'm actually the chair of both departments, so they look at all the applications in a fulsome manner. And then after, the only thing I want to point out, MDA and the police station coming forward, you might not know, but this council has been very involved in our staff in attracting these businesses to Mississauga Road. So they're not coming here without us really supporting them. And one thing we hear from employers all the time, one thing they always like about Brampton, obviously, is the quality of life, our public spaces, our park systems, but also our transit. So it's this idea that professionals, engineers are looking for three-bedroom or three-garage homes, is not exactly what we're hearing, but I do appreciate your points. Thank you.
Okay, see no other- Okay, see no other speakers? Do you need a motion to receive the four delegations? Motion to receive the four delegations, moved by councillor Mederos, seconded by councillor Visante. Anyone opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. What's the next item?
Through you, Mr Mayor. The next item is delegation 7.5. It's a video delegation from Cody Vacher regarding item 10.2.1, declaration of vacant council office. And Karen, if you can just give me presenter, and then we'll play that video delegation.
To the City Clerk, we've got a request from councillor Plessy to bring item 7.4 forward. Yeah, delegations are here?
Sorry, through you, Mr Chair, my apologies, I didn't hear that. So you want to bring forward the planning committee recommendations from June 20th, which is item 12.4, minutes, is that correct?
So go to 12.4. Anyone opposed to bringing the minutes forward? Okay. Okay, we have the minutes.
So through you, Mr Mayor, perhaps I'll start, and then planning will have to jump in. So I think councillor Visante suggested that perhaps the recommendations of Planning and Development Committee regarding the Springbrook area could be referred back for the consideration, and councillor Visante may expand on that. We did consult with planning, and they've identified the following items in item 12.4, dealing with Springbrook. The first was item 5.1 from that agenda, which was a public meeting item, statutory public meeting item for a city-initiated official plan amendment, and that would be Planning and Development Committee recommendation, PDC 115-2022, that's a statutory public notice item. The next item is 5.4 on that June 20th Planning Committee agenda, and it's a statutory public meeting item for 8265 Churchville. And that item 5.4 is identified in the minutes as recommendation PDC 118-2022. There also is item 5.5, statutory public meeting item, at the June 20th meeting for 1626 and 1654 Queen Street West, and that is identified as recommendation PDC 119-2022. Item 7.1 on the same June 20th agenda, which is a recommendation report regarding 1857 Queen Street, the Rotary proposal. And that's 7.1 on the agenda, and it is identified in the committee minutes as PDC 122-2022. And finally, item 7.4 on the June 20th Planning Committee agenda, and in the minutes it's identified, and this is in regards to item, a recommendation report for 1879 Queen Street, and this is the Mokon property, it's identified as recommendation PDC 123-2022. And I just wish to point out, and maybe planning will need to clarify this, I know some of the delegations were also speaking to another development application, which was identified as OZS 029. Excuse me, that one has been covered, so those are all the five.
So, Peter, just to clarify, I met in a park with residents in regards to Crystal Homes, that's the 0029, which one is that?
That is PDC 0, PDC 119-2022, so that's one of the five items, that's my answer.
What item is it listed as?
It's, it was identified as 5.5, I believe, on that agenda. 1626 to 1654 Queen Street.
5.5, okay.
So perhaps planning staff can confirm if we have this correct?
Yes, through the chair, that is correct. The item, Crystal Homes is item 5.5.
Okay, see councillor Plessy?
Thank you, Mr Chair. So I'm going to be consistent, I didn't support these when they came to planning. I think it's kind of rich, you see the video that, I guess it was a reporter that was asking John Tory and the premier about NIMBY and NIMBYism. And it's, it's kind of rich that we, you know, we put people into this, into this box whenever they come. They move to this area because they like the feel, they like the nature, they like being in this area. You have executives that are coming before you, saying that, we're executives, we feel that this is the area that we want to live in, and there are more executives like us that want to live in the area that, that we have currently. And yet, when an application comes forward to change that area, then we label them NIMBY. That's what I don't, like, I don't understand. There's a place for density, there's a place for high density, scattered all out throughout the city of Brampton. There's Heritage Heights, there's Mount Pleasant, there's downtown, there's in the northeast, there's in the south, there's tons of areas in the city of Brampton where densities like this fit perfectly. This isn't one of the areas. There are so many areas in Brampton that should be left alone. With the nature and everything that's involved in that, and I seriously don't understand why, you know, we have kind of this reputation here at the city that when people come before us to say, you know, we don't want this development, we call them NIMBY. And I think that's unfortunate. But I'll be consistent and say that places like this, it's, I do have some residents here, it is not in my area, but I will not be supporting these applications. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
councillor Visante?
Thank you very much, Mr Mayor. So as I spoke at the beginning of the meeting, was looking to send 5.1 back to staff for more consultation with members of the public. I would still like to do that, but listening to other members of council on what they may want to do, I'm open to anything else said members wish to put forward. But with that, Mr Mayor, that's what I would like to achieve today.
councillor Dillon?
Thank you. So I've had a chance to speak to some of the residents and listen to their concerns as well, so just like councillor Plessy, it's not my ward, but won't be supporting it as well.
I'll just speak to item 5.5. I got invited to meet with a large group of residents who really showed they didn't feel they had, this is in regards to the Crystal Homes. They felt they weren't consulted, they felt that whether it was the applicant, whether it was our own planning staff, they felt that their voice was not heard, and so I'd like to look at a procedural way to make sure that we can have a proper public engagement. We had, you know, there's been three meetings that I've been invited to. One was in a garage, where it probably had 200 people show up, I'm not sure, and then at a park, and the same message, that they just felt not included in regards to this Crystal Homes application. So I'd like to, for that to come back, so we can have, refer it back for more public
councillor Santos?
Thank you, through you, Mr Mayor, and I agree with the sentiment from colleagues around the table as well, and attended a number of those public meetings in various parks. One, there were two or three in our ward, in Ward 5, with residents, some of them were very last minute, one on a long weekend, but both councillor Visante and I were there with the mayor. And clearly, there has been a lot of concerns, particularly with those applications that are currently under public meeting status right now. And so I support making sure that those consultations of the public have their opportunity to participate. And as for the other applications and the recommendations here as well, consistent with councillor Plessy and councillor Dillon, your voices have been heard, most certainly, and so we won't be supporting those up for recommendation either.
So procedurally, it looks like there's a few of these where there's a request for more public engagement. Is there a motion where we can specify which ones? Because there's, I don't think it's all of them. Right? Split them up. Who wants to put forward that motion?
Sorry, through you, Mr Mayor. So I've only heard, I believe, two referrals. One is from the mayor, which I believe was 5.5, PDC 119. And councillor Visante, I may have misheard you, did you say 5.1?
5.1.
For PDC 115. So at this point, unless another member wishes to move the referral of PDC 118, PDC 122, and PDC 123, those matters would be considered by council in some other fashion. The recommendations are here for council approval, unless a motion is introduced to do something differently.
So should we deal with the easy one first? So for 5.1, 5.5, the motion is to defer that for further public consultation and report back to planning committee?
Through you, Mr Mayor. It would not be a deferral, it would be referral back for further consultation.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and I think I'm happy to refer them all when we're talking about the Springbrook as a whole. I think they all are encompassing. But I want to be clear that referring it back to staff doesn't mean that our planners, the developers, go out to the public to tell them what's happening. We have to work together. Councillor Willens and I did the exact same exercise up in the north end of Brampton, where we had a number of town halls that the developer came to tell the residents what was going on. So then we sat in a room, and we tried to figure things out. It didn't work, but the concept was, was good, that we worked together to kind of what's, for what's happening in the area. It doesn't mean that staff get to just go tell the residents what's happening. Consultation is consulting.
Okay, so we have the motion to refer all the items now, moved by councillor Plessy, seconded, advisor seconded, councillor Visante. Anyone opposed? Oh, someone on the board? Councillor Dillon's on the board.
Sorry, what's being moved right now?
Through you, Mr Mayor, the motion that's on the screen. So the motion is, as the minutes were brought forward, item 12.4, so it's the minutes of Planning and Development Committee. And clause 2 is approving the recommendations within those minutes, saving except for what's identified in clause 3, which are, there are five items that are being proposed to be referred back to staff.
Yeah, I think a referral is just kicking it down the road. And I think the residents have been pretty clear that they want us to vote against it. So it's just going to kick down the road till after the election. So if there's a referral, I'm going to vote against the referral, and then if it, if the referral does not go through the motion, we'll come again, I'll vote against the motion.
So to, to councillor Dillon, which one are you wanting to vote against?
So the one in particular to, I believe it's, it's the one 13.4, I believe?
13.4?
Is that, is that it? House Mederos, the one that they're delegating for?
So are you referring to the Rotary one that you want to vote against, or the Mokon one, or the, or the Crystal Homes?
All of them, yeah.
Want to vote all of them, okay.
Okay, Rick Knard?
Thank you, Mayor Brown. If council wouldn't mind, I think we should have a bit of a consultation with, with planning staff on this. The, the items that are up there that are public meetings, referral I think would be appropriate, a decision should be made on, by council on recommendations, but the, the public meetings, I think, would be appropriate to refer back to staff for further consultation. On the recommendation reports, there may be legislative timeframes in which we need a decision to be made, and I think it would be appropriate to have a few minutes to consult with planning staff, just to make sure that we're not at risk of missing those, those timeframes.
Councillor Plessy?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and thank you, Rick, for identifying that. So 5.1, 5.4, and 5.5, given that they are only here before us for the public meeting, have to continue to go through a process. There's no decisions to be made at this time of council. So it'd be, I don't think we should do anything with that. I remove my referral of those three items, because there's a process that they have to go through. So my only referral, as it stands, is 7.1 and 7.4, as those are the only two that are here for, with the recommendation report. And I know you want us to say no to it. What we're saying, though, is what, oh, sorry, what I'm saying is, maybe it is one more kick at the can to say to the residents and the developer, can you come up with something else? You don't want us to do that, that's fine. Chances are, this goes to the OMB. And there is a recommendation report, and I have yet to see anybody go against the recommendation report, especially residents, and win. I wish that there, I wish that has happened, but it hasn't. But like I've said to you, Tony, I'll do whatever you want me to do. You guys are the, you guys are the right pears.
Sorry, members, our members of the public have had an opportunity to speak, they cannot speak again unless council invites them back.
So I think what we're hearing from staff is that if there is, council ultimately can turn down any of these applications, but if you don't follow the process in doing so, you could damage your ability, it would just get overturned. And so I think what councillor Plessy is trying to say is sage advice. And so it sounds like the proper way to do this is to refer it. The two items. Now, the, the group that I met would not be included in that referral, 5.5. And so 5, 5.5 is just promising a public meeting?
Through you, Mr Mayor. Items 5.1, 5.4, and 5.5 were statutory public notice items, for which it was the start of the, the review and public engagement process. Those items came to the June 20th meeting, they received public input, it was a report, and the standard recommendations that are in those recommendations, PDC 115, 118, 119, is that staff take the input that's received, and continue with their consultation with agencies and other interested parties, and they will bring back a recommendation report at some point in the future. So there is, there is no recommendation or decision, positive or negative proceeding with those three items.
And for the challenge of just letting that proceed, councillor Plessy, maybe we can make this a friendly, is what we heard, now as they're with councillor Visante and Santos were too, is the public, people are saying they never got notices, people are saying, it just, it wasn't good enough. So can we, can we just say we send that back for another public meeting? Would that be a friendly? Okay, so we have a motion on the floor from councillor Plessy. Now, I know we've got a long agenda today, and so I was just going to warn council now, I meant to do it earlier. The goal today, given the length of the agenda, is to limit each council member to the two speaking at times? But I think the clerk, the official rules are two, right?
For city council, it's, it's twice, for members of council.
So normally I don't enforce that, but because of the length of the agenda today, we are going to enforce the two, the two speaking rule. Is it the will of council to take a five-minute break? So I'm seeing councillors... So I'm seeing Counselors Singh and Dillon asking for that five minute. Do I have counsel's indulgence? Counselor... Well, Counselor Santos is next. Why don't you speak while Counselor Santos is speaking? She's on the board to speak for the first time. While she's speaking, why don't you speak to the residents? Counselor Santos.
Thank you so much. And through you, Mr. Chair, just so that the public and the residents know, item 5.1, 5.4, 5.5 is currently in the midst of a process, which is consultation and public meetings right now. And according to the feedback from the residents, you were not granted enough time to be consulted on what may be happening, right? So staff have not provided a report, a recommendation report. We're not voting on anything in relation to those particular three items. That's Crystal Homes and the Spring Brook tertiary plan, and there was one other item. And that process has to unfold. So what we're saying is we would like to, as per the process, refer it back to staff to allow for more consultation in order for that consultation to be included into a report. And unfortunately, that's the process. The other items, 7.1 and 7.4, are recommendation reports that has completed the process, and staff have provided a recommendation report for us to actually vote on yes or no. So that process is complete, and that vote will happen today. The problem is, is if we vote to close down the process for 5.1, 5.4, 5.5, you really risk, you risk it being completely overturned by LPA and the OMB. We risk it. The city risks it. So what we're saying is let the process unfold for 5.1, 5.4, 5.5 accordingly. Allow for more consultation. Eventually, that staff report will come back to council, and we will vote yea or nay based on that staff report. And that is the issue, and that is the proper process. And Counselor Visante, myself, the mayor, we have had those meetings with residents numerous times, explaining that in person at various parks, garages, et cetera. And they understood that. And so what we're doing is making sure that we are protecting ourselves and the residents in terms of following the appropriate process, because we are currently in the public meeting process for 5.1, 5.4, 5.5. And today, we are voting on 7.1 and 7.4. So I just wanted to make that clear for folks, that that's the point that we're at. We're not voting on 5.1, 5.4, 5.5 today. We are following the process and allowing more time for consultation. If we interfere today and vote no today and stop the process today, that puts your opinion at risk in terms of what you want to do, if it goes back to LPA. Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Pelashy's motion's on the floor, unless council wants to... Yeah, okay, we have Counselor Pelashy's motion on the floor. And 5.5 to send back? And 5.5? It's just 5.5, 7.1, 7.4.
Motion 7.1, 7.4. 5.1, 5.4, and 5.5 can be dealt with through the area councils.
Okay. Okay, the first motion, 7.1, 7.4. Motion to send back to, your motion is to defer to planning, correct? Okay. Anyone opposed? Counselor Bowman and Counselor Willens oppose. Okay, the next item, moved by Counselor Visante. Carried, with two opposition, yeah. The next one is item 5.5, which is to refer back for another public meeting. Moved by Counselor Visante, seconded by Counselor Santos. Anyone opposed? Hearing none, motion carried. Okay.
So through you, Mr. Mayor, then the next motion would be the balance of the recommendations, which are 1 and 2, that are shown at the top, which is the balance of the Planning and Development Committee minutes from June 20.
Okay, moved by Counselor Pelashy, seconded by Counselor Visante. Anyone opposed? Hearing none, motion carries.
Next item, Mr. Mayor and members of council, 7.5, a video delegation from Cody Vacher regarding item 10.2.1, declaration of vacant council office under Section 262.1 of the Municipal Act. And I'm just gonna bring up the video now, delegation.
Hey, everybody, it's Cody Vacher here. Unfortunately, I'm not able to give my delegation in person. And I know some of you will miss the warm feeling of my presence in the council chambers. But unfortunately, I have to work for a living. I did want to make a comment about an agenda item, the vacancy left in Ward 7 and 8. I have three words for you. Don't do it. Don't replace or fill the vacancy. Save the taxpayers money. Taxpayers will save about $30,000 or $40,000 if you hold off on filling the vacancy. I know Pat Fortini, and I know that he's fully capable of taking on the extra workload. On top of that, Counselor Williams' staff will still be able to do their job. During the summer, there are a lot of barbecues, cultural festivals, and events. I know Pat Fortini can represent all the residents of Ward 7 and 8 during this period. That's all I really have to say for now. Don't do it. But if you are gonna appoint somebody, have a fair and open application process. If you apply for the job of city councillor or even camp councillor, there should be a fair process. Let all the residents of Brampton have the opportunity to apply, not just somebody who happens to be a friend of the council's. Taxpayers deserve to be treated fairly. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to give my delegation by video. My name is Cody Vacher.
The next, oh, do you have a motion to receive?
Yes, please.
Motion to receive, moved by Counselor Fortini, seconded by Counselor Visante. Anyone opposed? Hearing none, motion carries.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to members of council, there is the next delegation, 7.6. This is delegations regarding item 12.2 on the Committee of Council recommendations for CW 293-2022, Tamil memorial genocide monument design and location. This item was considered at the June 8 Committee of Council. And we have four registered delegates. The first is Asena Munasing, followed by Prasanna Gunithaleke, followed by Ruwan Corral, and then Chandrika Rathnamala. And we're just going to bring them into the session. I believe, I see three of the four present. And the first delegation is Sena. And Sena, you can unmute your mic now, and you have up to five minutes to address council. Please go ahead, Sena.
Yeah. Good morning, and good morning, council. I am here to talk about this proposed motion to build the Tamil memorial genocide monument. So this is a controversial issue between one community in Brampton against another. Unfortunately, it looks as my camera is not working. I apologize for that. So, and this is a controversial issue between one community in Brampton against another. Yeah, by going against the vision of 24 to coexist with social responsibility, respect, enjoyment, and justice. I have already made a submission explaining the damage this year due to our city in February 2021. It is ethical practice to inform all stakeholders when a controversial issue like this is discussed. But I was not informed about the June 8 meeting. Further, this was, that item was not in the agenda at the June 8 meeting, seemingly an item bought in by, at the last moment. However, there was an in-person presentation which proves that it is a pre-planned with the motive to avoid the opportunity for any other stakeholders to make representations. The original motion to erect Tamil genocide memorial monument in January 2021 was also not on the agenda either. Some councillors admitted in subsequent meetings, our association had with them, that they knew nothing about the background of the motion when it was moved. And this is the time to make it right. There are no public consultations were arranged to get public opinion on this controversial issue which uses city resources for some objective which is nothing to do with the city's objective. In the June 8 meeting, everyone was saying that other communities have expressed their support, but didn't name any, except I think Bosnian community. But none of them mentioned the objections expressed by me at the city council meeting representing the Sri Lankan community, which is on record. This is an established pattern of discrimination against non-Tamil Sri Lankan community in Brampton. Therefore, I request this decision to be deferred until the due process is followed with the study of the impact of such a memorial as on the Brampton's vision, followed by public consultation. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Sena. The next registered delegation is Prasanna Gunithaleke.
I just wanted to say, Peter, because this is a delegation, right?
These are delegations, yes.
I just want to state, Asena, that I take great offense to any effort to engage in revisionist history and pretend a genocide that killed tens of thousands of people didn't occur. I find that commentary offensive and belittling to the lives lost. Our next delegate is Prasanna.
No objection of that it happened, but it is not only that Tamil that have been perished in that conflict.
Prasanna.
Thank you. Good morning, Mayor, and good morning, councillors. May I first suggest that the word genocide, by using this word, you are actually demeaning the word for actual genocide. No international, international recognized community, like the United Nations, has recognized that there was a genocide in Sri Lanka. There was no UN panel that has said that there was genocide in Sri Lanka. I would like to just bring, I've been a resident of Brampton for the last 20 years. What I'm asking is to have more community engagement and public consultations before going through this Tamil genocide memorial, even a monument. Sri Lanka went through 30 years of a terrorist war. And all communities of Sri Lankans suffered. We are all victims. There were Muslim victims, Sinhalese victims, Tamil victims, other victims. I personally have lost family members and loved ones who are victims of this war. I have almost escaped death. So by exclusively having a memorial for one ethnic group, you are minimizing the grief, the losses, the pain, the suffering that all other victims of Sri Lanka went through. So I would again ask, before going through this, approving this, make this actually a memorial for all victims of war, which would be fair, which I can go and I can remember my loved ones as well, and other communities as well, you know, the Muslims, the Burgers. Let them go and also it's an inclusive memorial. That, that's all we are asking for. By excluding us, you're showing division and discord. We have left Sri Lanka and come to Canada to live in peace. And we have forgot, we want to, you know, leave our past behind and live in peace. By coming here and having this exclusively Tamil genocide memorial, you're pitting communities against each other. So, which is, you know, which falls in the face of the inclusivity and that Canada offers, and the city of Brampton offers as well. So I'm imploring city council and the mayor to, again, give due process and have public consultations, community engagements, before going through with this project. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you. The next registered delegation is Ruwan Corral.
And Peter, I just want to note, since it was referenced, the United Nations, the United Nations did state that there was a failure of the responsibility to protect the R2P doctrine, which Canada was actually pivotal in establishing. And the UN says between 40,000 and 70,000 civilians were killed during the final five months. So there was reference that the UN didn't acknowledge it. Just want to point out that is incorrect. Our next delegate is Ruwan Corral.
Please go ahead, Ruwan. You have five minutes.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor of Brampton and the councillors. I'm also going to speak about the genocide memorial for Tamil. Actually, the people who proposed are talking about the demolition of the monument in University of Jaffna in Sri Lanka. That monument was rebuilt within three months and reopened for the public. I would like to request all the councillors to study about what happened in Sri Lanka. Please consult all the parties, not only one party. I would like to give some facts about Sri Lanka's situation. Real ethnic cleansing happened in north and east of Sri Lanka by the liberation tigers of Tamilila, the Tamil Tigers terrorists. And they chased away all the Sinhalese and Muslims from north and east. You can study that, is in the documents. Thousands of innocent people were killed in nighttime raids and by roadside bombs for that ethnic cleansing. I was narrowly escaped from two bomb blocks while I was going to the work. And I lost five of my good friends, all engineers, while they are coming from work to home. The blast happened in Dehiwala, Kalambu, the train blast. That time, actually, that time, husband and wife did not travel together to avoid both getting killed simultaneously. That's what the situation. The other day, the delegation, Mr. Marina Agam, mentioned that 140,000 people killed. That is utter lie. In Mullavai Kal, it mentioned by United Nations and Diplomatic Communication, 7,000 to 15,000 were killed. And LTD kept 300,000 as hostages and fired at those who flee. All of them are rescued by Sri Lankan army, and they are living happily now. And there are rehabilitation programs going on in Sri Lanka. And lot of programs going on for the harm... the harmony of all the communities, Sinhalese, Tamils, Muslims, and other communities. And Mr. Marian Agam mentioned also that no foreign persons during the war. That is also a lie. Indian journalists were at the frontline command centres, providing uncensored reporting. ICRC delivered food and medicines provided by Sri Lankan government. Indian doctors were present at the frontline hospitals. Diplomates were regularly briefed and had access to drawn food items. All the communities suffered due to the war. There are a lot of developments and rehabilitation have been carried out by the Sri Lankan government. Child soldiers were rehabilitated and sent to schools, universities, funded by the government. In Sri Lanka, both Sinhalese and Tamils living peacefully today, and there are a lot of programs.
To the speaker, you have to speak to the motion about the Tamil moral genocide. We don't need to hear justifications for what a dictatorial government may have done at the time.
Yeah, I just mentioned because there were delegation, Mr. Marian Agam gave some wrong information. I just wanted to correct that, that's why I'm telling. So finally, I would like to say that make this memorial devoted to all the victims of the Sri Lankan ethnic conflict, so that we all, myself and other Sri Lankans, Sri Lankan Canadians, can come to grieve their loved ones at the memorial. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And our next registered delegate, Chandrika Rathnamalala, does not seem to be present in the meeting, so, Mr. Mayor, that's it for the delegations.
If we had someone come into this hall and make a deputation about how the Holocaust didn't happen, we would all be irate and offensive. To hear someone come in and say that the seventy thousand people butchered and killed didn't happen and we shouldn't have memorial, I find offensive. So do we have to accept these deputations, or how if council, these councils unanimously supported the memorial, how can we adequately show that, you know, they can come, this is a democracy, they can come and say what they want, but if someone says something repugnant, how do you put that on the record?
So through you, Mr. Mayor. So there is provisions in the procedure by law that speak to people participating in meetings, need to be respectful, need to follow parliamentary procedure, you know. But this procedurally is just receiving a delegation. Council has dealt with this item. This is an item on the agenda, the Tamil Memorial Genocide Monument, design and location. It's a recommendation in the Committee of Council Minutes. So persons under the procedure by law are entitled to delegate on business on the agenda. So really what's before council at the moment is just either receiving the delegation, and that's procedurally what council has done in the past. There still is the recommendation in the Committee of Council Minutes, which is just an update on the status of the location for the monument and things like that.
Well, I see no one wanting to move receipt of the delegation, so we'll move on to the next item. Next item.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The next item is 7.7, a delegation from Azad Goyat, Brampton resident. This is in regards to item 16.4 on today's agenda, the decision of the Superior Court of Justice. And Azad is present. Good morning, Azad. You have up to five minutes to address council on this item.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Before I start my presentation, I have some suggestions. Like council members have provided the drinks, like tea and coffee, and public members are sitting for, waiting even for a good quality water, so I request to provide some water for the residents who want to delegate and attend this meeting. Thank you. And before I start, I say Brampton first, resident first, and I want to add one more thing, taxpayer first. We are the taxpayer of the city, so we should be treated fairly. And remember, there is a one taxpayer, only one, not so many. So we are paying for everything, for every level. And there is a good quotation, one of my friend posted on Facebook about Brampton City Hall, "Welcome to the Brampton School of Politics." We don't need a Brampton School of Politics, we need a full-fledged university in Brampton. Enough is enough. Thank you. Now I want to start my delegation, and when I'm delegating, this is not personal, this is not against anybody, any councillor, any member, this is in the best interest of the residents, best interest of the taxpayer. So I want to delegate on agenda item 16.4 and 16.10, 11, and 12.
Sorry, sorry, Azad. Your delegation at the moment is only on 16.4. You'll be brought forward again to delegate on 1610 to 1612.
I did send an email on that, didn't you?
Yes, we're treating that as a separate item, so you'll be called back to delegate on that item.
Okay, so will I get the time when I have to present that, or I have to sit all the time here?
That is a separate delegation. We're reading into your time at the moment.
In today?
So, Azad, you are using your time right now, and this is for, I believe, the declaration of vacancy?
Agenda item 16.4 only?
Is that it? Superior Court?
Yes.
Sixteen four.
Okay, thank you.
And there are no preambles as part of the five minutes, so you are, you do have to proceed.
Okay, thank you so much. On Monday, July 11, Superior Court of Justice found the action of the group of councillors have been illegal and awarded twenty thousand paid by the Corporation of City of Brampton. City of Brampton is funded primarily by the taxpayer, property taxpayer, who are effectively and now paying for the action of the councillor, and this is the cost, in addition to the cost incurred by the City of Brampton. Council can do, if want, while challenging member of the public, take legal action. They can do whatever they want, no. They shouldn't challenge the public members. What is even more egregious is that councillors were advised prior to the appointing more that they would be contravening the municipal act. As stated in the Superior Court decision, the city solicitor and city clerk advised in open session that motion did not comply with the statutory requirement for filling a council vacancy. The Superior Court decision in this case is strong warning, and should future councillor anywhere in the province of Ontario attempt to break the law again, the decision says, while generally the appropriate standards of review on questions of law is correctness, courts are cautioned in cases involving municipal challenges to require clear demonstration, clear demonstration, before concluding that a municipal decision is made without jurisdiction. Councillor Sharmin Williams, who voted in the favour of the pre-appointed, her successor is now Associate Minister in Provincial Legislature. Her actions were signalled out in the Superior Court decision and said, "The design of the mechanism is clearly intended to maintain the integrity of the process for replacing member of the council by excluding, departing incumbent from the process to avoid any potential or mischief or appearance of the impropriety." So taxpayers must not be on the hook whether even being paid by the city's insurance policy and must recovered by those involved. So why, I want to ask the council, why the residents of Brampton, why the taxpayers of Brampton are on hook for the legal fees for twenty thousand, which was incurred on this case, and why, and this is apart from the fees paid by the legal work done by our city council? So residents need a answer, and this kind of illegal motion must not be brought, and the councillor who brought this motion should be held responsible, and the money should be recovered from their own pocket. Thank you.
Okay, I don't see any questions. Councillor Dylan, is that from the, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Delegation received, moved by Councillor Patini, seconded by Councillor Pulashy. Anyone opposed? Hearing none. This takes us to...
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So there were two added delegations that relate to business on this special meeting agenda. The next delegation is from Yvonne Squires, Brampton resident, and it's in regards to item 16.1 on today's agenda, an update on the Brampton U forensic audit, and the added items on today's special meeting on 16.10 to 16.12. After Yvonne Squires' delegation, we have the other delegation registered from Azad Goyat regarding item 16.10 to 16.12. So welcome, Yvonne. You have up to five minutes to address council.
Five minutes you're giving me? I need more than five minutes. Okay, good morning. Welcome back, and I'm back. There are quite a few things that I've been reading about that I'm not too pleased with, especially that it affect the taxpayers' money. We have to work very hard to pay you all salary, that you sit here, and if you're not doing nothing, you should be booted out, all of you. And you all should be working together to do the work that we send you here to do, or else I'm going to walk to get rid of whoever is causing the problem. I will be knocking on doors in your constituency also, you will see me, because if you all are not working for us, we have to get rid of the people who are causing the problem. And we, the Brampton resident, don't want to hear your dirty linen spread out there. It's none of our business what happened in Turkey. It's none of our business what happened to the States. What I'm concerned about, why is Brampton City paying legal fees for anyone who have committed a crime? And a crime must be proven that it was committed in a court of law. Was there any, was there any court proceedings on all these things? And going to the media on all this is just bringing down Brampton. I love Brampton, and there are people sitting on that podium that born in Brampton and is sitting there now, and I'm pretty sure they care about the residents of Brampton. Mr. Mayor, I would like to ask you a question. When I met you the first time in Gem's Restaurant, and I told you I didn't vote for you, and I'll be watching you, monitoring you, and I told you you work for us, we don't work for you. Okay, I have been watching you, and until the past couple of months, even when I've been hearing all kinds of things about you, what you're doing, I did not take it serious because I don't listen to you say. I check for myself, and I always make sure I have the right answers. But in the past weeks and months, I am not too pleased. You're the captain of this ship, and if you're not steering the ship into port to save us, we all will be drowned, so you will drown us. So the thing is this, Mr. Mayor, with all what you're saying, you didn't know that all these monies, these finances were used and paid out. How come you are the captain of the ship and you don't know? So if you don't know, we want to know why you're sitting there. And secondly, I am sick and tired of the fighting here. I've been coming here for a long time, you all know me. And the thing is this, this is the worst one, this is the worst city that now that I've been coming to. And I'm not too pleased with putting the members, the city members' pictures in a bus station. It is very dangerous, and we have to think about what you're all doing here, and it has to do with something and someone in here that does it. That is a Donald Trump tragedy. We don't want Donald Trump in Brampton, okay? And the thing is this, to do a thing like that is wrong, and I want to find out where are all this money? I want an investigation to find out if we got back the money from this that was given to the university or whatever. I need it. I need to know it. I need a thorough investigation in that. As I told you all before, you work for us and we pay you. And I had no problem with Patrick Brown until I see all these things, and what's going on? And get your facts right before you go to the media. CP24 is a Fox News from the States. And how comes you have so much privilege to go to Fox News? I don't know. You're just messing up yourself, Patrick Brown, because of what they were telling me, I didn't listen to them. I go on facts. And the thing is this, you all fighting against each other. I saw Santos on the TV with Patrick Brown. Do you work for Patrick Brown or you work for us? Let me know now. Let me know now.
Yvonne, Yvonne, you're at five minutes, so if you can please wrap up.
Well, I'm coming back here. I won't, I won't leave City Hall until this all is cleared up, so you can't get rid of me for five minutes. It's not right, and I need an investigation into why you put Jeff, whoever, I'm not accusing anyone, whoever put Jeff, um... And in the, in the, in the bus station. This is what really got me here today, and there is a lot of things. This again, when are we going to get back our money? Listen, when are we going to get back the money, the money that is paid to this woman who accused one of the councillors of whatever you say? We need back that money. We have to get it back, and we cannot believe and tell people because we don't know if what she's saying is right or true. It did not go in a court of law, and we cannot accuse the councillor for anything until we have proof. So I don't want to hear that, because this councillor has a family also, he has children, and we don't want to hear that. We want back our money. Yes, I know I have five minutes already, but I have to say more than five minutes. I need to see all of you getting together, because all of you have to work for us, and if you have differences...
Thank you, Yvonne.
Think about it, talk about it, because this is what we used to do, or else I will be here every meeting, and I'm going to have all the people in this place. The whole of Brampton will be here.
Thank you, Yvonne.
Okay, thank you for your time, but I'm not finished. Okay.
Thank you, Yvonne. We will, motion moved by Councillor Willans, seconded by Councillor Bowman. Anyone opposed? Hearing none. Delegation is received.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Members of council, the last registered delegation is 7.9 from Azad Goyat, Brampton, and this is in regards to the added business items 16.10 to 16.12. Welcome, Azad. You have up to five minutes.
Thank you very much. Again, I want to introduce myself. My name is Azad Singhoyat, and I'm a voice of Brampton. Regarding agenda item 16, 10, and 11, enough is enough. Enough is enough. The act of sexual harassment is a horrible act in a civilised society, and person responsible must resign, as it is against moral and ethical value. It is extremely disappointing and concerning when our elected representatives are involved and continue to represent us. Being a resident of Brampton, it is an insult and shame for all of us that we are being represented by a person who has been involved in sexual harassment or misappropriate sexual misconduct. Municipal act need, must be amended, it not need to be amended, it must be amended, and person anywhere, any part of Ontario or any part of Canada must be penalised is a horrible sin on humanity. I urge the whole council, all of you, including the person who is involved, to disclose the minutes of settlement to taxpayer and cancel non-disclosure agreement and prohibit settlements with... settlements with victims of sexual assault complaints without public disclosure and council approval. How the settlement can be done without the knowledge of the council? Even in this settlement, if the city officials are involved, any level of city official, starting from the lower level to the highest level, must be investigated, and if something wrongdoing happened, they must be terminated with immediate effect without, without paying any severance package. We are the taxpayer. If somebody is not doing their job properly and he's being terminated, why the taxpayer has to pay the money for the severance? People are drawing three hundred thousand plus per year salary, severance package, why? Are we the taxpayer fool? Are we to just pay, pay the salary? No, enough is enough. This must be investigated, and person involved and taxpayer's money involved must be recovered from the person on personal expenses, note to the taxpayer, and the person must be penalized. Thank you.
Okay, motion to receive, moved by Counselor Pulashy, seconded by Counselor Willens, anyone opposed? Hearing none, motion carries.
So, Mr. Mayor, that concludes all the delegations for today's special council meeting. During approval of the agenda, there was a motion to carry to vary the order of proceedings to deal with new business items sixteen, ten to sixteen, twelve, after delegation, so we can proceed to those items. Those are three discussion items that were added to the agenda for today's special meeting.
Okay. So that is my item, item sixteen point, um, ten. And as part of this, there's two motions I'd like to put on the screen. Item sixteen point ten. Screen them up momentarily. So, and I will speak to this. I was shocked and alarmed when a whistleblower who works here in the city of Brampton came to me and told me about these payments. I immediately asked Paul Morrison for a briefing. Four members of council, myself, had a chance, along with the city clerk, to sit with, with Paul. I've been instructed from the city clerk that it is up to council, it will take a council motion to release the settlement document, and I'm asking council to immediately release that document.
Sorry, through you, Mr. Mayor. My advice to you was that this is a matter that should be discussed in closed session, and there may be direction given.
But I, I don't believe this should be done in camera. The public deserves transparency.
Yeah, yeah. We want that.
And I, I am livid that this happened, I want that on the record. I'm furious that this happened. And the document, the document should be released, because when I hear someone say, "How did the mayor and council not know?", I have the same response. How did I not know about this? Why was council not informed? And I want to add, I've, I've had members of council who have come to me and said they didn't know. And I want to say that I take them at their word. I, I know there's been questions about who knew and who didn't know, and I, in fairness, I had a conversation with Counselor Fertini yesterday, and he said he didn't know about any of this, and I don't believe any member of council knew about this.
When did you know?
Shortly before July nineteenth, is what I found out. And I want, I, I want this document to be released today.
Yes, I thought you too. Don't talk to me.
And, and I believe this is something council can unanimously agree to. And there's, and frankly, this is a moment where we look ourselves in the mirror and say, "We will not allow what's happened elsewhere to happen in this city."
Yes.
What, what happened with Hockey Canada, when they allowed themselves to talk themselves into saying that it, it, it could be hidden, was wrong. There are parliamentary hearings happening right now, based on Hockey Canada saying that for legal reasons, that what they were doing was okay. No. No. Not taxpayer dollars, not a cent. If there's a cent of taxpayer dollar spent, it is our business. We should approve any cent spent. The needs we have in our city, the pressing needs we have in our city to think a single penny was spent on this is wrong. So I hope that every member of council says every document related to this is released. There is no cover-up here.
That's right. And passing a response, a mandate from the city, city official must be...
There's going to be a series of motions that relate to this, but this is, this is the, the first motion is, and I'm going to read it out. "The city council retroactively prohibit payments as of December first, two thousand eighteen, for any payments in regards to sexual harassment claims against a member of, member of council in the city, that any such payments be paid back by the member of council within thirty days." Pretty straightforward, it just says, anyone, anyone who had taxpayer dollars used. And I, I have to say, I'm, there are members of council that are in the dark. Counselor Fertini, and I believe you're, you're in the dark, and he said, "I wish I had the same briefing." The immediate question I got from some members of council, of course, insurance would cover this. Insurance didn't cover it. I've got the documents right here that the CEO gave me, that shows insurance did not cover it. Taxpayer dollars. You get why I'm angry? So, the fact that a few members of council got to learn about this is wrong. All members of council, the public should know every single detail. And I want all these documents released to the public and all members of council. So the first motion is that any taxpayer dollars used should be immediately paid back within thirty days.
Yes, thank you.
I see Counselor Fertini wants to speak to the first motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and yeah, and you know, I was a little upset when Counselor Santos went in the media and said some of the councillors knew, with a friend, and mentioned names, which I did not know. And as far as I know, I got an email that nothing was paid by taxpayers, by one of our staff. So, I'm in the blind, but I hate getting accused that we knew, some of us knew, which we didn't know nothing. And Paul, to you, next time you do a briefing, you should give all of us a briefing, not just to five members of council, because you take direction from us. And we end up getting on the news, some of these councillors, and we didn't know nothing. And that's not right that you brief the mayor and four councillors and leave us in the dark. So I, you know, I'm really upset on that part, because we should have known. Second is, Mayor, you went on there, and, you know, and you had two other people there, a resident and a councillor, saying that we kind of knew what was going on, you know, and which I did not know nothing. As far as I know, I didn't even know this existed, and some of us councillors. So when the media is asking and stuff, as far as I know, it was dealt with. Then all these documents come out, and I know how you got them, and we didn't get them. And that's not right that people work just for you, they work for the, this whole council. And this is what causes the dividing and the fighting, because some people know some things and some people don't. So it's very unfair for some of us councillors to take the heat on something we didn't know.
And in fairness, Counselor Fertini, I just want to say again, I don't believe you knew.
Okay, and this, this is also means in the future for other stuff that tax, we use taxpayers, not just for this, for other stuff, it should all be out in the open, clean, transparent, for everyone to listen, not just on this. There's other stuff too, like Mr. Squire said. I hope everything comes on the open, because, you know, it's nice to be transparent to our residents. As Mr. Squire says, we work for them. At the end of the day, thank you.
Don't offer everything anymore.
If I can, if I can ask the public, there's time for public delegations, but the audience participation when a member of council is trying to speak is not helpful.
Undone, thank you.
Counselor Bowman.
Thank you very much, through you, Mr. Mayor. I also had no idea about any of this, but I heard on a newscast, someone also said that, that I was enabling this behavior, which I found very offensive myself, not knowing any of this. So we can go on and on and say how mad we are about this. I'm going to ask the legal, because I read last night, it was disclosed that you had sent us an email, and can you just please reiterate what the, the view from legal is on this?
Through the Chair to Counsel Bowman, my recommendation, as was reflected in the email that you're referring to, is that discussions regarding this matter be conducted in closed session, given certain legal requirements that we are subject to. And so my recommendation to council would be to refer the matter to staff, so that a full report can be put forward, with all the legal ramifications arising from the recommendations that are set out there.
Okay, and following that up, thanks, thanks Diana. Are we talking about this right now, putting ourselves in any legal jeopardy or any legal risk from anybody who may or may not be involved with this case?
Through the Chair to Counsel Bowman, my recommendation would be that I answer that question for you in closed session, and that any further discussion of this be conducted in closed session.
Thank you, I, I understand. Mr. CAO, these documents that were given to the mayor, you provided those to the mayor?
Yes, I did, Counselor. In the meeting, the mayor spoke about, the mayor and the councillors attended my office. And we, I, Peter Fay was there, so was, um...
No, Diana wasn't.
No, just Peter and myself. And the mayor had asked for all the documents surrounding collaboration. We gave him what the public facing documents were, and we still hold back the, the documents that are covered under the NDA, and we have not provided those.
Okay, so what the mayor and some members of council received was anything that's available from a public portal?
With the, uh, with the members of council, the mayor specifically directed me to provide him with the documents, and I provided the mayor with a copy of the documents, the only copy of the documents is provided me by staff. And there are documents in there that are public facing.
Okay, so, I'm sorry, Counselor Pulashy, just inform me, council members did not get these. Okay.
So barring all that, with the, the process in place with the NDA, I, I once again believe that this needs to go into closed. I absolutely implore that we go to closed on this.
Okay, well, there is no, there's no winner here. There is no right or wrong to, to anything here that has gone on, but I got to say, we all made an oath when we took this office, that, hang, hang on, we all made an oath when we took this office, that we would protect the corporation. That's one of the things. I am not protecting, I'm not... What? I'm not protecting anybody else here. I'm not protecting anybody. But at this time, I am not going to put the city at any potential legal risk. I move that we go in camera to hear what our legal advice is on how this opens the city up to further potential litigation before we do anything.
If it helps, Counselor Bowman, the file member, five, six, four, oh, one, five, six, five, four, three, which hopefully can be distributed to all members of council, says from the insurance, they don't believe it's the city's responsibility, it's the, it is the perpetrator of the act's responsibility. It says right here that for the allegations of sexual assault, battery, intentional infliction of emotional distress, forcible confinement, amputations, in public office, this was, is not saying it's city responsibility. It's like, we're not liable, not the city.
Okay, I didn't ask anything about, about...
You said the city liable.
No, I'm, I'm talking about future liability based on the confidentiality between the two parties, if, I have no idea about this, so that's what I'm talking about, future liability.
So, can, can, to the clerk, can this, the documents that are shared to be emailed to all members of council? So, just for their benefit?
Some people received it already, I think it's not fair, sorry, point of order?
Uh, this, sorry, there's a point, yeah.
Point of order? So, it's not fair that some people received it, some people didn't. I'd like to have a copy of that too.
I've seen the CEO nod, so that should be, okay. Next up on the list is Counselor Santos.
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. I do think that this information, as I, I shared on Tuesday morning, that this information should be made available, that we should see it, the minutes of settlement in particular. And as I said in the press conference that morning, the stuff that happened here in terms of what happened behind our backs that we did not know about, I did not sign an NDA, I did not sign anything, I had no idea any of this stuff happened. But I do know that council unanimously supported the "It's Not Okay" campaign. I do know that council unanimously supported the "Break the Silence" campaign that advocated for women to talk and speak up about violence against women. We unanimously supported that. And, and what is very disturbing to me, as now the only woman on council, is that while we were advocating to break the silence, while we were telling the public and encouraging women to speak up, I now find out that taxpayers' money was being used to keep women silent. And, and that, and I need more details, you're right, I need more details from that minutes of settlement to find out exactly what happened in those negotiations, if they even happened. The details of, of, of what we have are very minimal, and we're now bound by some sort of NDA that I didn't even see. And so, there is a bit of a difference when there's a reference to, you know, fiduciary duty, to protecting the corporation, et cetera. I'm protecting the voices of women who are sexually harassed all over the place, and we unanimously supported the "Break the Silence" campaign. We unanimously supported for money to be given, the forfeited salary to be given to women's groups. We didn't unanimously support to pay off victims to have them silenced, we didn't support that. In fact, we called for a resignation before, because of it. Every single member of council voted unanimously calling for a resignation. And yet we still somehow, that's why we're all shocked, somehow paid with taxpayers' money, the, to, to, to silence the woman who was harassed. And, and I want to know what happened, and that's why I support releasing the information. I don't have access to that, I don't know what happened, and I would like to know. And finally, you know, some members of council are talking about fiduciary duty and making sure that we cross our i's and dot our t's. You know, a few weeks ago, members of council said we could do whatever we want, good or bad, that council reigns supreme, and that legal or not, we could do whatever we want. And despite the advice from the city solicitor, despite the advice from the city clerk, an illegal motion was passed. And that put the corporation at risk. And so, it then was ruled by a judge that in fact it was illegal, that motion was illegal, and it did put the corporation at risk. And therefore, and therefore, the hypocrisy of that comment related to protecting the fiduciary duty of the corporation is really disturbing, especially when it's being used to try to defend a woman who was sexually harassed. to try to defend a woman who was sexually harassed. And there's a transcript, and there was a three-panel judge panel that ruled in favor of the integrity commissioner's report. So, and, and the questions on police investigation, the reason why PEO Police, RCMP could not investigate is because it happened in another country. And PEO Police can't go into another country to investigate something. And that's where the problem is, and that's the reason why the ICE was the one who investigated. And we unanimously on counsel, every single person here voted unanimously to suspend pay 90 days and donate that forfeited pay to a women's group. But I don't know if that happened. Was the forfeited pay donated to the women's group? I don't know. What I do know is that money was used to silence a woman who was harassed in Branton, a Branton resident for that matter. So, as the only woman on counsel, who has been advocating against gender-based violence and advocating to end violence against women, I support this motion and I'm happy to second it. Thank you.
Counselor Mederos.
Thank you very much through you, Mr. Mayor. And I thank the counselor previously to talk about all the campaigns. We also signed up for anti-bullying. We also stopped, we wanted to ensure there was no workplace harassment. I think we've standed unanimously for those areas. Getting back through you, Mr. Mayor, I do appreciate Diana, I think the challenge here, because it almost seems I also have to publicly say that, you know, after that press conference when we talked about enablers, as a previous counselor explained, we all also voted the all same way, so I'm not sure what enabling, what that was referring to. But, you know, just as bad as the subject we're talking about is the political opportunism of what we're trying to do. It's one thing to, we put it in legal hands so we don't politicize this. We follow legal instruction because there was lawsuits. We're not here playing to, we have to be adults in the room. We have to run a corporation. We're getting advice that we need to go in camera to give us some advice, give us a context. I'm one of the counselors, I did not know any about this, I don't know what's being challenged, I was surprised this even a press conference. So, I didn't have the luxury of those four counselors who met with the CEO and have inside information and so on. What I would do like to say is that this is such a serious matter, it impacts people's lives. This is not something to be throwing around to try to go after someone during politics. This is something very serious that's a societal issue. And to use it here in such a way and to have this grandstanding is not dealing with the issue and is not respecting the issue. To simply say that this issue, we recognize how serious this issue is. But it's just as serious for us to sit here, you know, first, I'm not, you know, a lawyer, second, I'm not an investigator, I'm not police. Appropriate authorities dealt with the issue. The issue has been dealt with. Now, what we're here today is saying that there is secret hush money. I received official word, as many members of counsel, that there wasn't. I'm not sitting here saying, I don't know. I would like to get a proper briefing, because when we make decisions in counsel, we need proper evidence and information. I can't sit here and listen to someone say one thing, someone say another. I agree with Counselor Bowman, who I think that is the proper approach. Let us get the, you know, all the information.
Come back out.
Give us that briefing, and then come back out and people can do what they want to do. But I certainly, it's very difficult, because what's happening here, it's almost a political stunt, is essentially, well, you got to support it because this is what happened. I don't know what happened. All I know is the way I voted, I voted along with everyone else, no one's enabled anything. But at the same time, the decision's been made, competent authorities. I guess the one question is the date and time. So, when did this agreement, are we allowed to share, or is that something in camera as well? When did this agreement be signed, or when did it all get settled?
Through the chair to Counselor Mederos, again, I would suggest that all of this be...
Okay, I appreciate that, that's fine. Okay, so, I would like to move that we go in camera, take a five-minute break, go in camera, give us the due diligence and briefing that doesn't put us liable, and also, it doesn't put through allegations on people here, because they were staff. That's another thing. There, we had different senior leadership during those timelines. So, you had a different CEO, you had different legal representation. I want to know who knew what, what knew what, who made decisions. So, all this, you can understand, it puts the city at risk if we start throwing people's names, because ultimately, the buck has to stop with someone. And the buck has to stop with the senior leadership. So, I don't know, I just want to get that information, and then we can discuss this. So, I'd like to move that we go in camera, get that information, and then more than happy to come here and have a public discussion. So, a motion's on the floor to go in camera, please?
Recorded vote.
Counselor Plessy's next?
No. I'm moving a motion to go in camera, but if you want, I can hold the motion for you to talk. Okay, so I'd like to move in camera, please. Just to get solicitor's advice.
Is this debatable?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, yes. This is a procedural motion, move into closed session. So, the motion is moved by Counselor Bowman. Now, there's a secondary with Counselor Mederos to move into closed session in regards to item 1610, 1611, and 1612, as it relates to matters dealing with solicitor client privilege and litigation or potential litigation. It is a debatable motion, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Plessy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, I'll start by saying that I'm happy to go in camera and listen to what our legal advice should be. But I find it really rich, the two people that are moving that motion. Counselor Singh and myself sat next to you virtually and asked for the exact same thing, and you guys said no. So, that...
When?
When you guys broke the municipal act, and then it was proven in court. It's the exact same thing, something a little bit more, but it was the exact, we asked you, we asked you for the exact same courtesy. Go into camera, listen to what the city solicitor has to say, then we'll come back out and make a decision. And you guys voted against it. Not gonna vote against it now, because it's the right thing to do, because what you guys did back then was wrong. And that was proven in court. It was proven in court. But it was still proven in court, you broke the rules. So, I'm happy to go into closed now to listen to what legal has to say. But I very much support anything that's coming out of this, be put into the public realm. Thank you.
We don't want to conflate a bunch of issues together as part of this, just guidance for counsel. I believe part of the problem that we saw in the parliamentary hearings in Ottawa regards to Hockey Canada was the culture of secrecy around payments. I don't believe that we should be having any of this discussion in camera. I believe it should all be in public for the public to see. But ultimately, counsel can choose to receive legal advice in camera and then come back in public session. But I support all of this being in public. Part of the problem is the fact that this was done in secrecy. And to the clerk, if a member of counsel has a pecuniary issue with the motion, are they responsible to declare a conflict?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, if a member has a pecuniary interest, they would declare it at the appropriate time, usually at the start of the meeting or once it becomes known to them. So, that's up to the member.
But a motion to have a repayment, so if someone had to repay funds, would that not be a pecuniary issue?
That's, through you, Mr. Mayor, that's not for me to decide, that's for the member to declare his or herself. And there is avenues available for the member to seek guidance from the integrity commissioner, for example.
And what happens if someone has a pecuniary benefit and they don't declare it to counsel?
There are two courses of action. A person, I believe it's an elector, actually can make a complaint to the court, petition the court for a contravention of the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. Or, more recently, a member of the public can make a complaint to the integrity commissioner to conduct an investigation in terms of whether there's a contravention of the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. If there is, there would still need to be recourse to proceed to a court for proceeding if that was the case.
And could they then be suspended?
I'm not 100% familiar with the penalties, but there is, I believe, there are some different penalties that may be available to the court, and I believe that in the court's hands.
So, there's a motion for, the motion to go in camera?
Yeah, after lunch.
But let's take a recorded vote on, to go in camera?
So, through you, Mr. Mayor, there is a recorded vote to move into closed session and after, after a lunch break? Okay, to deal with item, closed session business in regards to section 239 to ENF, Solicitor Client Privilege and Litigation or Potential Litigation, in regards to items 1610, 1611, and 1612 on the agenda. All in favor to proceed into closed session at the appropriate time, please stand to be counted. Showing in favor of moving into closed session is Counselor Dillon, Counselor Singh, Counselor Fortini, Counselor Mederos, Counselor Bowman, Counselor Plessy, Counselor Willens. All opposed, please stand to be counted. Showing as opposed is Mayor Brown, Counselor Visante, and Counselor Santos. The motion carries seven to three.
So, what time should we meet in camera? Say 12:45?
So, through you, Mr. Mayor, just to advise, I think there is a light lunch coming at around 12:30, that may be a little after that, if you want to have a lunch break. And then, I think, before we proceed into closed session, if part of the discussion may be the provision, sharing of information, that information will have to be copied, so we'll need some time to do that, to make that available to all the members of counsel. So, I just want to advise, it's up to counsel when you want to recess to, but there's going to have to be some work that we're going to have to do to get ready for that closed session. Yes, yes, this motion has not been considered yet by counsel. That's correct.
And then maybe if staff's preparing documents, recognizing the counsel could vote to release the minutes of settlement, I'd have that ready too. One o'clock? In camera?
So, this meeting is now recessed until one o'clock?
Okay, it is 2:27, or should say back at 2:23. We're back from in camera. No item, no action was taken in camera. And we're back at 6:10. We have the motions on the floor. The first motion, before we adjourn, was this, I'll read the motion out. The city council... The city council... Okay, motions on the screen? City council retroactively prohibits payments as of December 1st, 2018, for any payments in regards to sexual harassment claims against a member of council in the city, that any such payments must be paid back by the member of council within 30 days. And the council immediately by 5:00 PM, August 5th, '22, released the minutes of settlement document, uh, for the Dillon sexual harassment settlement, court file number CV2000002896000. And that is, um, the clerk, we would require a motion of council to release the minutes of settlement. Is that correct? That's what you told me, a motion to council to release the minutes of settlement?
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor, my advice to you was, uh, this matter should be considered enclosed, and council can make a decision, and council has received advice from legal counsel in terms of how to deal with this matter. I, I can't speak for legal, and advice that's been provided.
No, but when I emailed you asking how do we release this, you said it would have to be a motion to council. I can't individually access it.
That, that's correct.
Thank you.
No, no individual can access it.
Counselor Fortini, followed by Counselor Bowman.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So when we release these, are we releasing every single document, or just the ones that are on public notice?
This one only references the minutes of settlement.
What's on public, not, not the stuff that's not, uh...
This doesn't reference the insurance, this doesn't reference the statement of claim, this only references the minutes of settlement.
Through the chair to Counselor Fortini, the documentation that is referenced in...
Sorry?
Sorry, through the chair to Counselor Fortini, the documentation that's referenced in the resolution is not a public document.
It's not a public?
No, there's no public document, the documentation that is being referred to there is not a public document.
This will show what was paid.
Okay, I'm trying to, I can't hear you, maybe I have to turn the mic. So what we're voting on this, is it public documents, that anyone can get an FOI, or it's something that's buried?
No, uh, through the chair to Counselor Fortini, what is being sought here is not, is access to documentation that is not any sort of public documentation.
So I can put the city at a big risk. Counselor Bowman? Thank you very much, through you, Mr. Chair. I'm trying to figure out a way to put this, because we, we got advice in closed, but didn't get advice in closed, but has the, has the other party in this litigation given us explicit permission to release the minutes of settlement, which they are a part of?
Through the chair to Counselor Bowman, um, I was like, I'm just going to answer with the word no.
No. Okay. So, this motion basically will release minutes of settlement to a legal document that was signed by two parties, one of which has not given us permission to release any of the documents, correct? Okay. Um, with the utmost respect to the other person who's part of this document, um, I will abstain from voting until we specifically, well, oh, okay, I, I can't abstain, Peter, what, what happens if I abstain, Mr. Clerk?
So through you, Mr. Mayor, uh, in the municipal act and for municipal council, there is no abstaining. If a member is present and a vote is, is called, a member can either vote in favor or against. If a member is present and fails to vote, then their vote will show in the negative.
Okay. So, I cannot support this until I see written documentation from the other party's lawyer that says they release us from all legal liability if we release these, these documents. Is that, can I, can I say that?
Through the chair to Counselor Bowman, I think you just did.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, I think, I, I don't, I think that's fine.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Counselor Mederos?
Uh, thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor, and I guess just along that same lines. Um, so if we just walk through for the context, so I guess people can understand, uh, the plaintiff itself, uh, and you can't speak to the plaintiff, but there's a, there's a agreement that parties came to agreement not to reveal details. And what we're going, we're going against what, in this case, the plaintiff had requested. So I guess my concerns, and along the lines as Counselor Bowman, unless I hear from their lawyer, how can we confirm releasing details that they approved? So that's one, because we already know about the risk and liability. We're effectively, by doing this, we're saying, please sue us, and please sue us from various parties. The second aspect of this motion, which I, I just don't understand, is that, are we saying, so when the city is named in the lawsuit, based on this motion, if a city is named, so again, this is not against an individual, but when the city is named, and let's just say in future, or as this goes to, oh, this goes to this date, so the city being named in it, effectively, we're saying that the city shrug its own responsibility as an entity to, saying that essentially we're not an entity or party to being released, because it's saying essentially that we prohibit any payments, even though we were named, and it's our lawsuit, because it's not on behalf of anyone. This is, what we're dealing with, the expenditures, were something that the city is responsible for. It's not anyone else. So effectively what we're saying is, you know, so who do we expect to pay back the money if we're telling that the city's not responsible? You know, so I, I'm just finding it difficult to you, because, you know, we're not talking about any other party, we're talking about the city is being sued, no different than all the other lawsuits against the city. And we're saying that whenever we're sued, we can't pay, or we can't pay, you know, whatever the law's agreement is, so effectively, who are we expecting to pay for this? So I don't, it, it's kind of, it's kind of a misnomer, like I, I don't understand it. So I don't know, maybe if someone wants to help craft it in a different way, but if the city was named, no one else. It's one thing you say, okay, I will, the city will pay on behalf of Mr. Goyat, or the city will pay on behalf of a staff person, but what this essentially, the city has to pay its own responsibility, and we're saying that the city doesn't pay.
So, if I could help?
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
So, um, if everyone has a copy of the statement of claim, um, the statement of claim is, um, is suing Counselor Dillon and the city, but they're suing the city based on Counselor Dillon being a representative of the city, um, and so what this motion says is that any cost associated with this claim, again, that the city's paid, um, would be paid back by Counselor Dillon, that's what it says within 30 days.
So the only issue I have, Mr. Mayor, and, and I understand what's, what's the attempt, but essentially, it's not up to A, B, or C, they named the city, so no one can influence why they named the city. They sued whatever happened, and they sued one of the counselors, but they effectively named the city as well. So what are we exactly saying, to saying that we prohibit the payments, so we're trying to say, any monies that we gave, what is effectively say? Do we take that money back now? Or are we going to ask someone else to pay for that? And who's the person we're going to ask to pay for it? Because no one else was named except us. So that, that I find in itself, you know, there's tension and there's some inconsistency in what we're proposing. And again, the second aspect is that we just went to go get legal advice. You have a mutually agreement, which all parties said, this is the agreement, and frankly, you know, the center of this, as we say, and I know everyone has tried painting it with a different color of, you know, we talked about a plaintiff, we talked about what transpired, and so on, but effectively, we haven't heard from, I guess, the lawyer representing the plaintiff, to what exactly they want. So we, we've threw this grenade, we've made this into something, and now we're sitting here saying that, you know, someone has to be responsible for this. But who? It's the city's lawsuit. So I, I just, um, that, that is my trouble with, with this, and it just, it, it is not a clear, uh, and it deals with, you know, the liability of the city on an agreement which was already being done with. Now we have an election coming up, so residents have the opportunity to make their judgments, uh, but in terms of, I'm not sure what it's going to, you know, effectively do, and what clarity this is going to bring, because the city was named, no one else. So the city can't shrug its responsibilities and sort of say, no, you can't name us, and we blame the other person, or we can't, you know, that would mean all our lawsuits, when the city is not rightfully named, be it with an employee or a counselor or so on, uh, that would create this type of, you know, confusion and situation. So, uh, I just think that it's, it's very dangerous, what we're trying to attempt, uh, but, uh, you know, that, that's my opinion, and agreeing with Counselor Bowman, it's hard not to hear all the full legal advice, uh, and understanding what the other solicitors and why they came to that agreement, because clearly, an agreement was, was brought. Thank you.
Counselor Fortini?
Yeah, thank you, very quickly. So do we have the plaintiff's lawyer, I thought he was online, he's not here no more to ask a couple of questions?
Um, Counselor Dillon?
Yep. Question, is this the only motion, or is there any more motions?
This is the motion in front of us.
Yeah. Is this for all three, or are we, we dealing with the other, uh, items, actually, the separate motions for that? For 11 and 1611 and 1612?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, I believe we're just, all three are being grouped together, because that was the, vary the order, but we're dealing with 1610 first, and then 1611 presumably, and 1612.
So I gotta, I gotta a few comments, I've got a few comments. There was a civil matter that involved me, that, that has been resolved, and the action was dismissed. The resolution did not involve an admission or acknowledgement of liability or wrongdoing. The city acted upon, in, in its case, on its own. I also want to thank Mayor Brown for his great theatrical performance earlier today, complete with a sense of conviction in his voice, the waving of documents with the word confidential written all over it, uh, the secret meeting that only he's privy to, and of course, for breaking all the rules to discuss issues which he knows he can't speak about in open session. And this is to the residents of Brampton. What we're witnessing today is a desperate politician attempting to hold on to the last remaining thread of his reputation and political power. The city's listeners made it clear, in an email to council, as a whole, that no hush money was ever paid. We've been told repeatedly by staff that these matters can't be dealt in open session, but that's not enough to stop Patrick Brown from doing what he does best. Manipulate, deceive, confuse the unsuspecting residents who he proclaims to represent. And why this grandstanding on part of this mayor is really not that hard to figure out. Patrick Brown's been under scrutiny, intense national scrutiny. He's been in the spotlight for the past few years with his disqualification from the CPC leadership race, and prior to that, forced to resign from the Provincial Conservative Party for his predatory sexual behavior. In fact, we were to have discussions on the allegations of repeated sexual misconduct by Patrick Brown throughout his political career, well, if we were to, we'd be here for a few months worth of special meetings, just to deal with his unethical, immoral, and shady behavior. I want to make this clear.
Counselor Paleshi?
This mayor continually distracts...
My point of order, Mr. Mayor, is Counselor Dillon is kind of going off topic. If he could stay to 1610, I think that would be appreciated.
Okay, Counselor Dillon, you have to stay to 1610?
I'm talking about 1610.
So Counselor Dillon, you're not talking about 1610?
No, you're talking about why we're here.
Okay, so to the clerk, if the member doesn't want to speak to the item listed, what do we do? Counselor Paleshi has a valid point.
So through you, Mr. Mayor, there was a point of order raised. If you accept the point of order, and you've tried to instruct the, the member to stay within the boundaries of the topic at hand, um, you, hopefully the member will abide by that. If not, there are escalation procedures in the procedure bylaw.
What is that, what is the escalation?
Escalation procedures may be to the point of correcting the member, asking the member to correct their ways, to the point of naming the member in the minutes, which could ultimately lead to, uh, uh, an expulsion from the council chamber, if necessary, and then the member could come back if an apology is provided. Um, so those are escalation procedures that, that would be available, should council wish to get there.
So we'll give you a chance, before we consider expulsion, we'll consider... Um, the topic here is the city council retroactively prohibit payments as of December 1st, 2018, for any payments in regards to sexual harassment claims against a member of council and the city, that such any payments must be paid back by the member of council within 30 days. The council immediately by 5:00 PM, August 5th, 2022, released the minutes of settlement document for the Dillon sexual harassment settlement, court file number CV200002896000.
And the hypocrisy behind it. So I'm going to continue on. In fact, we have, if we were to have discussions of the allegations of repeated sexual misconduct by Patrick Brown throughout his political career, we'd be here for a while. I want to make it clear, this mayor continually distracts.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I, so I've been asked by the mayor as chair of the meeting to provide the provisions for, that could lead to an expulsion. I'm going to look them up in the procedure bylaw, because it's, it's a very rare situation. I can't remember doing that in my 15 years here, um, and I will look that up, and I will advise the mayor momentarily. So through you, Mr. Mayor, I'll quote, uh, section 11.2 of the procedure bylaw, which says, "Procedures that may be used by the chair in the event of a breach of order are as follows: An increasing order of severity, provided that the chair may use any of the such procedures regardless of order of severity where circumstances warrant. One, advise and correct the member. Two, request an apology or withdrawal of a remark from the member. Three, warn the member. Four, call the member to order, by which the member shall be seated and not speak further until recognized by the chair. Five, name the member, by which the member shall be called to order and further, that the member's name and offense shall be entered into the minutes. And six, expel or exclude the member." 11.3, uh, subsection one of the procedure bylaw says, um, "When a member desires an appeal of a ruling of the chair regarding a conduct, the member shall give notice to the chair that his ruling is being appealed, and shall state the nature of the appeal. If there's an appeal to the council or committee with respect to the ruling regarding conduct, then the chair shall, shall immediately take a vote to sustain the decision of the chair without debate, and the decision shall be final." debate and the decision shall be final."
Removed from the chamber at this point. And so, just take that under advisement. Point of order?
Can't be removed unless you make a ruling and then the council will vote on it. So, I just wanted to just clarify that. Thank you.
Okay, so, why don't we split this motion? The city retroactively prohibit payments as of December 1st, 2018 for any payments in regards to sexual harassment claims against a member of council in the city, that any such payments be paid back by a member of council within 30 days. And the second part is that council immediately by 5:00 PM August 5th, 2022, release a minutes settlement document for the Dillon sexual harassment settlement. Listen, this is going to be up to residents to decide. Am I asked of council? Just be transparent with the public. We can't unknow what we know. I wish I didn't know this. I wish a whistle blow in the city didn't take this to me. I wish I didn't have it confirmed by our CEO, but it is what it is. We now know this and similar to the predicament that Hockey Canada found itself in, once you know, you have to deal with it. We can't cover it up. We can't sweep it under the carpet. This is serious. Uh, and the issue isn't about the lawsuit against Counselor Dillon. It isn't about the lawsuit for the city of Brampton because Counselor Dillon is, um, an employee, a council member of the city of Brampton. The issue is taxpayer dollars. That's my issue. Taxpayer dollars should never be used for a settlement like this. Taxpayer dollars. The issue with Hockey Canada is that they were getting a subsidy from the government of Canada that was then being used. Um, or it's why the funding was taken away. It's the taxpayer dollars. And so, my request is, is council just let the residents of Brampton make a judgment. We should not in any attempt try to block this or cover it up. Because if we do, if we do, um, then we're enabling this secrecy. And I know all of us don't support this. We had a unanimous decision by this council calling on Counselor Dillon to resign. I thought this council was very clear. And so, and so, I, and I know some people, you know, were upset when they heard allegations. They knew about this. I don't think any of you knew about this. I don't, and I know you wouldn't stand for this. I know if there was a vote of council to use taxpayer dollars on a sexual harassment settlement, no one here would support this. Well, this is our moment of truth. You look in the mirror and say, "Are we going to, are we going to cover this up?" Thank you. We have the vote on part one and vote on part two. Um, Counselor Fortini, I have you down for a fourth time.
Can we add any other stuff in the past? I know you went to December 1st, 2000. Is that the beginning because of the beginning of the term?
That's when this term started, yeah.
Of the term? So, what will happen when we find out other investigations and stuff? Well, we add to go everything in the open or it's going to be behind closed doors? Maybe we could add it to all this so we're transparent and accountable to the taxpayers about anything on the investigation as well as it comes out in payments and all, who's going to be responsible for all that? We could add it to this because it's the right thing for our taxpayers to know what happens also on the investigations that are coming out. And we could add it to this motion because we have to be liable for taxpayers. Like you said, I agree.
Yeah. So, you'll support this?
So, you know, I'd like to add, you know, we got the Brampton U, we got the rest, all these investigations, they should all be out in the open, uh, completely open. Nothing should be enclosed.
And you'll support that? Yeah, and you'll support that, Counselor Fortini? Counselor Fortini?
Well, he said they're not a settlement. I just worry that, you know, supporting and not supporting, I didn't get the information. That's all I worry and I don't want to make a mistake here and then say, "Well, you did or you didn't." Unless I had the information in front of me, what, and what we got by legal, really, we had no information. So, I might have to abstain on this because I didn't get no information, yes or no. What happened, what didn't happen. Uh, we couldn't get the other lawyer involved. We didn't want him and really we didn't get no clarity on this. So, it's hard for me to say yes or no, and I really wanted to find out the truth.
So, Counselor Fortini, an abstention, just for the knowledge, means your voting no? Is that correct?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, that's correct. Procedure by law says a person, a member who is present who does not, uh, vote, it will be counted in the negative.
So, if you want to abstain, you'd have to leave the room.
No, through you, Mr. Mayor. I didn't say that. I said if a member is present and they...
If you don't want your vote counted, you're counted if you're in the room.
Yes. If a member is present and they fail to vote when a vote is called, their vote will be marked in the negative. If a member is absent, they are not part of the vote.
The only way to abstain would be to leave the room. That's the point.
Like, their lawyer wasn't here. We were hoping we were going to ask questions, Mr. Mayor, we were going to ask questions in the open. Can we defer this to Wednesday and make sure he comes here so we can ask some questions in the open?
We can bring him back, but I want these motions passed.
Well, how could we pass this if we can't ask the question? So, I don't mind him coming here and asking these questions in the open, see what he has to say. And then it's easy to make a decision if we really want to find out the truth. And we did mention that. So, if he's willing to come here and ask her questions, I'm, we're willing to do in the open. And this way, we can make a thorough discussion what he's actually saying and ask these questions out in the open.
You would like a friendly amendment?
Through the Chair, Counselor Fortini, I can tell you that, um, our external counsel will not answer questions regarding this in open session.
So, then I have to abstain. I can't, I got no answers here today. Thank you.
So, Counselor Dillon has spoken three times, is that correct?
On this matter, you've spoken more than once, Counselor Dillon. So, did Counselor Fortini.
I'll leave to the clerk to tell us.
If he was on the point of order when he pressed the button, um, then it would still register. It registers every time the button is pushed. That's my understanding of the session, how the system works. But there is precedent in this debate where Counselor Fortini had spoken more than twice and the chair recognized him. So, I leave it to the chair.
Okay, so Counselor Dillon's already spoken to this twice and Counselor Maderos?
I have to take the advice of the clerk.
That he spoke more than twice, it's okay for him to speak?
First of all, Counselor Dillon, you have a pecuniary conflict in this. You shouldn't even be participating in this debate. We made a decision not to have you expulsion from the chamber. We've shown you indulgence for not removing you from the chamber. Counselor Maderos?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To Diana, I know, again, this is one of those impossible situations and I feel for you. Again, as a lawyer, and it's more, um, once you get to an agreement, because almost what we're doing here, that means any agreement that we've ever done across the city, you basically backdated and say, "Listen, no." You know, like, once you have a legal agreement, isn't it very, I don't know, from a legal perspective, can you go back? Or, you know, that's one thing is a statement of reclaim or something, I don't know. But to go back and, oh, to prohibit an agreement that we already signed, you know, from a legal perspective, are you allowed to do that?
Through the Chair to Counselor Maderos, with respect to Resolution Number 2, um, to release minutes of settlement of documents, you could do it. You would be in violation of every single settlement agreement that had a confidentiality provision in it, though.
Okay, so one, yes, we would be open to be sued and liable and all this. And the first part, it just seems counter because we already signed off on agreement and we would go back to sort of saying, "No, now we're not going to pay those monies." Who do we expect to pay those monies? And I guess maybe the movers of the motion can explain, who do you expect to pay this money now if the city was named?
So, the city was named in a lawsuit because Counselor Dillon is the city councillor?
Okay, listen, I don't, you're talking about the reason, but effectively you're saying to go back and claw back that money, like, what do we expect to do?
So, since I was named, you're asking the question on the mover of the motion. They are saying we are liable for Counselor Dillon's actions? I'm saying Counselor Dillon should pay this funds. Taxer, whatever settlement was paid, and we now know, whatever settlement was paid should be paid back by the council, not taxpayers. This is not taxpayers' responsibilities.
Sorry, Mayor Brown, there's no mechanism in what you're suggesting here. We're the one who are named. We, you can't, good or bad, we're the one who are named. So, how do we shrug our responsibility and force someone else to pay unless you say you want to sue them? Right? Because you can, we can sue for that money, but how would you expect someone to pay back? Like, I don't know, like, we're the ones who are named. I'm not trying to be difficult, but we're the ones who are named. So, you can't say, "Mr. Boya, you have to pay the money back now. The only way we can go get money from you is we have to sue you." Right? There's no mechanism to do this. So, where's the mechanism for us to get that money paid? It doesn't exist. So, what we're doing is really, it's great, I guess, for the public, but to really understand, there's no mechanism because essentially it doesn't say who's paying for this. So, partly the motion, what it needs is you effectively put, who do we expect to pay for this? And how do we expect for them to pay for this? And how are you going to collect it? All this other stuff. So, that's what I just find the trouble. But I do appreciate, you know, it's important for this information and I do appreciate, I guess, what the attempt is, but, you know, litigation's been done. So, I don't know. It's almost like you're trying to go back and fight something that's already been dealt with. So, I don't know. Anyway, so that's my struggle. Thank you.
And I don't see any other speakers. See, I know it's difficult for members of council. Some are friends with this councillor. At the end of the day, it shouldn't be about friendship. We owe this to the public.
I want to know, how are we going to get this money off this guy? Are you going to garnish his wage? That's all I'm asking.
They could, so...
Are we allowed to garnish his wage?
So, to the clerk, could we garnish the wage she's asking?
It's got nothing to do with it. Really? Maybe we should go back last year, too. How are we going to get the money? I want to know. How are we going to, are we allowed to garnish wage?
On your side? No.
If he says I don't want to pay for it, what are we going to do? That's all I'm saying. Don't talk about friendship. I'm friends with you, too. How are we going to get this? You can't take money from a stone, blood from a stone. How are you going to get it? Are we going to go to payroll, say, "Don't give the payroll, send it to us"? Are they allowed to do that? I don't know.
No.
That's the only thing I'm saying.
So, to this city clerk, before we vote, um, if council passed a resolution that this was the responsibility of the council member, not the city, um, could it come from whatever salaries owed the councillor? Or would it be a bill sent to the councillor?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I don't know. You're asking questions for which I don't know the answer.
Okay, recorded vote? Uh, it's vote on part one and part two. So, I'm the chair. I've taken the advice of the clerk and frankly, Counselor Dillon, this is a pecuniary benefit for yourself. You should not be voting. You should be warned, you should be warned that, that, you should be warned that, um, that if there was a complaint to the Integrity Commission for voting on something, you have an integrity, you have a, you have a pecuniary benefit. So, I can't rule whether you have a pecuniary benefit. It's very clear you do, but to the clerk, who decides if he should declare a conflict?
An individual member, through you, Mr. Mayor, decides if they should declare a conflict.
So, I can't rule that he has a conflict. He'd have to decide on his own.
Another member of council or council as a whole can't impose a conflict on another member that I'm aware of. A member can self-declare.
Okay, so let's have the vote then. Recorded vote requested. I want to vote. We're listening to what the clerks.
So, a recorded vote has been requested on the two motions. Part one is the motion on the screen that the council won't read it again. It's been read many times. All those in favor of the motion, please stand to be counted. Showing in favor of the motion is Counselor Singh, Mayor Brown, Counselor Palashi, Counselor Visante, Counselor Santos. All those opposed to the motion, please stand to be counted. Showing as opposed to the motion is Counselor Dillon, Counselor Willens. Counselor Bowman, how do you vote? Counselor Bowman is abstaining and in accordance with the procedure by law, that will be marked as a negative vote. Counselor Maderos, how do you vote? Counselor Maderos is abstaining, so in accordance with the procedure by law, that will be a negative vote. Counselor Fortini, how do you vote? So, Counselor Fortini is abstaining and in accordance with the procedure by law, will be counted as a negative vote. So, the motion does not carry. The vote is a tie. On a tie vote, the motion does not carry. Five, five.
And Peter, can you read out the motion when you do the votes?
So, the next motion is, we'll treat as motion two of this, which is that council immediately by 5:00 PM August 5th, 2022, release the minutes of settlement document for the Dillon sexual harassment settlement. Court file number CV20-00002896-0000. A recorded vote has been requested. All in favor of that clause two, as shown highlighted, please stand to be counted. Showing in favor is Counselor Singh, Mayor Brown, Counselor Palashi, Counselor Visante, Counselor Santos. All those opposed, please stand to be counted. Showing as opposed is Counselor Dillon, Counselor Willens. Counselor Bowman, how do you vote?
I abstain. We do not have the information from the other party.
That an abstention is counted as a negative vote in accordance with the procedure by law. Counselor Maderos, how do you vote?
I abstain as we don't have the information from the other party and because it's possible...
And abstention is considered a negative vote if a member does not vote. Counselor Fortini, how do you vote?
I would say allow the information.
So, that it will be shown as a negative vote as well. Um, the motion does not carry. It is a tie vote, five to five, and a tie vote fails.
Uh, the next item?
The next item is 16, 11.
Is to prohibit nondisclosureism related to sexual harassment allegations. Um, can you put the first motion on the floor?
Bring up the motion that you emailed. I just want to make sure it's, is that the one, Mr. Mayor, which is at the bottom of the screen?
No. The one to release from the NDA, the victim.
Okay, that's the second one that was sent.
What's that? No. So, here's the third one, yeah. Take that up, do that one first. Okay?
Mr. Mayor, while we're just getting on the screen, it will require, if you're moving it, it does require a second.
Counselor Palashi, Counselor Santos? So, be very clear, um, if council wants to say that we're never going to try to attempt to silence a victim, here's an opportunity to say that victim is released from the NDA. That we don't try to hush or silence a victim. We're saying that we release them from a, a nondisclosure agreement. No, we just say, no. We're, we're party to this. I, I, I think it's wrong that we're party to this, but we are.
We're on the board.
Yeah. And ca- I get it, Counselor. I'm furious that the city's part of this, but the reality is, we are. If, if this had gone to the city for permission, it would never be part of this. And now we're saying it's not a hush payment, but paying someone not to speak, what do you call it?
We need the information. We didn't get the information we wanted. So I can't vote on something I have no information.
I'm on the board for this.
Counselor Dillon, followed by Counselor Maderos.
Again, uh, kudos to the mayor for the theatrics. Um, we got advice, we were going to get advice in camera. Everybody want, I think most people here wanted advice. It was voted down to bring in the external party to provide us that information. And now, the mayor and some of the, his supporters, uh, on council, want to make a, an, a, a.
A point of order, Counselor Palessi. Unadvised. Counselor Palessi?
I'm not confirming or denying what Counselor Dillon just said, but if Counselor Dillon just leaked in-camera information, I think that, sorry, I'm speaking. You'll get your chance when you put your name on the board. So through you, Mr. Mayor, to the clerk, is, that's kind of what I just heard, is in-camera information just being leaked out to public?
Pilot complaint.
Is that right?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I, I'm neither going to confirm or deny that, but all members of council have been provided, um, warnings, um, by myself in closed session today, about keeping information in closed session. The remedy if somebody feels that there is a disclosure of, uh, closed session information, um, could be through the Integrity Commissioner.
All right, thank you. And through you, Mr. Chair, to you, Mr. Chair, is, if we can get Counselor Dillon, that was the last topic. We're on a different topic now. If we get Counselor Dillon to zone in on this topic that is before us now, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Joyce, love the floor. So, the, there's allegations of hush money. And, but what's happening right now is, and a political attempt, a political stunt. Uh, and what, what's happening is that they want, they don't want the residents to know what's going on. And we've received, uh, no, we wanted to get information. But they're the ones who denied it intentionally, just so they can come out here, uh, and try to push something through and, and have council make an unadvised decision. I would have loved for the external council to provide us information. I would have loved to, for everybody to ask questions and to know what they're voting on. Right now, nobody knows the implications of whatever they're voting on. So it's another attempt to fool the residents. It's theatrics. It's a political stunt. You know, the mayor himself is involved with numerous sexual misconduct, uh, allegations.
Point of order again.
And so this is all to dis- this is all to distract, and they're doing, I, I, I don't know if they're doing a good job at it, but they're trying their best.
With item six point one one, that the city released the victim Jane Doe from the NDA on the Dillon sexual assault settlement. That is what we're discussing, this motion. Not anything from before, what have you. We're talking about this motion right here. And from my perspective, I would like to hear if Jane Doe would like to say something. I would like to see it released. I, I don't want the, I don't want the, uh, the plaintiff silenced anymore.
Uh, to the city solicitor. Um, so if I read this motion correctly, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, essentially what we're saying is we're giving the opportunity now to the plaintiff to be released from the nondisclosure agreement with the city, which was already signed off. So this is the agreement that the city solicitor, uh, um, negotiated with the plaintiff's lawyer. And what we're saying to them, so I, I, I just need to understand, because they signed off on it, and they actually, my understanding, wanted it, but what we're stating is we're just going to go to them and give them the opportunity to release them. And does that put everything?
Through the, through the chair to, to Counselor Maderos. Unless I'm directed to waive privilege and provide you this information in public, my recommendation is that you go into closed for advice on this. Because to answer the question in open.
Uh, and through you, Mr. Mayor, if you waived privilege in your professional opinion, would that make us li- would there be liability around that?
Yes, I would not recommend that you waive privilege.
Okay. So essentially, I guess the movers of the motion can maybe explain to me, maybe they have information that I don't have. The plaintiff's signed off on it, their lawyer. Do you know if they have intent? Do they want to bring this up? Does the victim themselves, or not even the victim, the plaintiff, does the plaintiff themselves want this? Do you have information I don't have?
Through the, through the chair to Counselor Maderos. I, I, I strongly advise that any conversation about this be had in closed session, um, in order to protect the interests of the city.
Okay. I guess, I guess my issue, uh, through you, Mr. Mayor, uh, and I appreciate that, is that I, I just find it very uncomfortable, and I said it from day, you know, from the beginning, eh, this issue is very sensitive. But we're using it in a way that we don't even know what the plaintiff themselves feel about what we're doing. So none of us have had contact with this person, but yet we keep doing this for, and we understand what this is all about. So I respectfully will take a step back, because again, as far as I know, the city was named, the city dealt with its portion of it, and I'm not cal- I'm not even speaking to Counselor Dillon or the plaintiff. That's between them. That's a private situation. I'm dealing specifically, as my fiduciary duty, as board of directors, we have dealt with the situation. So I'm not sure what is trying to be attempted here. So I, I will take a step back. We've heard all the sensitivities regarding liability and what's being attempted. Thank you.
So. Um, Counselor Maderos? The allegation from the whistleblower in the city was that these were hush payments. The way to alleviate concerns or hush payments is to say the city will release the victim from, from being silenced. That if the victim chooses not to say anything, they don't have to. If the victim wants to say something, they can. We're simply saying the city will not hold the victim to being silenced. I don't see how anyone can say no to that. Yes, it means if the, if the victim wanted to speak tomorrow, they could. Does anyone have objections to that?
Counselor Visante is on the list.
Counselor Visante?
Thank you, Mayor. Call the question, please.
So, Mr. Mayor, in calling the question, the members that have spoken in this item are Counselor Dillon, Counselor Maderos, uh, Counselor Visante. Do any other members wish to speak? Um, and there are, there's some members that wish to speak. So, Mr. Mayor, I, first I advise that we take a vote. It's just a majority to call the question, and then after that, um, those members that haven't spoken will be given an opportunity to speak. If it fails, then the debate is still open for council. So the motion is to call the question from Counselor Visante. It's a procedural motion, does not require a seconder.
So Counselor Visante, there's people that still want to speak. We just, do, do, call the question.
Yeah. So. All in.
All in favor? Okay, motion carries.
Okay, so those members that have not had the opportunity to speak will be given the opportunity to speak, and Counselor Bowman is on the list.
Thank you very much. Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor, again, I will go back to what I said the, the very first time we started talking about this. We do not know, we have not heard from Jane Doe, Jane Doe's lawyer on any of this. And I would prefer that we hear from her lawyer specifically as to what her desires would be in terms of anything before we go and pass motions in this council that may be against what she actually wants to do or say. So, you know, I'm, again, I'm not going to support this until we get some indication from her legal team that this is what they want to do. Thank you.
Counselor Palessi?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so I think moving this motion, uh, I think is the, uh, um, is the way for Jane Doe to decide whether she does want to speak or not. It's completely up to her. I am sick and tired of, uh, silencing victims. I think that that's not what our role is. The fact that an NDA was even signed and came to council, I think is, and didn't come to council, I think is disgusting. So I am certainly happy to support this, and it'd be up to Jane Doe whether she would like to, um, she'd like to speak on it or not. I don't need to hear from her lawyer. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Fortini?
The, or the Jane Doe. Do they break the agreement? Or, I hate to put you on the spot. Like, if you signed an agreement, a contract, last year, and all of a sudden now you go on it, you're going back in your contract, you're going back in your agreement.
Ca- Counselor Fortini, uh, to the chair to Counselor Fortini. Um, I, I can't answer that question here.
I, I want to put you on the spot. I got it. Okay, I can't support something, then. I can, thank you.
Okay, we have the vote, a recorded vote?
Recorded vote's been requested on the motion regard to sixteen point eleven, as shown on the screen, that the city released the victim Jane Doe from the NDA on the Dillon sexual assault settlement. All those in favor of the motion, please stand to be counted. Showing in favor is Counselor Singh, Mayor Brown, Counselor Palessi, Counselor Visante, and Counselor Santos. All those opposed to the motion, please stand to be counted. All those opposed to the motion, please stand to be counted. Uh, Counselor Dillon, how do you vote? You, uh, you have not voted. You are, you are not voting, so your vote will count in the negative, in accordance with the procedure bylaw. Counselor Fortini, how do you vote?
I would abstain unless I hear from her, that's okay for us.
So by not voting, your vote will count in the negative. Counselor Maderos, how do you vote?
I abstain.
So by not voting, you are deemed to be voting in the negative, in accordance with the procedure bylaw, Counselor Bowman?
Abstain.
Uh, Counselor Bowman will be shown as voting in the negative for not voting. Counselor Willens?
I abstain.
Counselor Willens will be shown as voting in the negative, uh, for not voting. Uh, so the motion does not carry. The vote is five to five. The motion loses on a tie vote.
I think, I think we got a motion there, but members of council being tied to NDAs that we're not aware of. Trying to find where that one is.
I think the ne- the next item is sixteen twelve.
Well, I think we're still on sixteen eleven, though, with the, in regards to the NDA. I think we have a motion that if for, I, I, that members of council must agree to be a party to an NDA.
Through you, Mr. Mayor.
You say, when someone telling us that we are part under this NDA? No. I- if, if members of council don't give consent and have never seen the settlement, we should never be part of a, a nondisclosure agreement. To, to be there for resolve, the members of council cannot be part of a nondisclosure agreement unless they give consent.
So, Mr. Mayor, I, I've just received the motion from you now, so we're just going to get it copied and brought up on the screen. So just bear with us a moment, please.
Counselor Maderos?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I guess to our city solicitor, or to Diana, sorry. Um, it is, now, my understanding, the way, again, please, I guess for the public also, when there is a lawsuit of some sort, and usually it will come to council for, uh, you know, here's a direction, and so on and so on. Um, this, usually, I guess legal takes the role, or we give that authority to someone externally. So can you just maybe, eh, do you have, you know, any comments on this motion per se? And in terms of what is a responsibility as a council when it comes to these type of agreements? Because I, I imagine this is not these NDAs or whatever they're referred to. This is something that's standard, I guess, what we do, that every other municipality does.
Through the chair to Counselor Maderos, I, I can't answer that question. From a general perspective and how we, um, we use a municipality managed litigation, and it's consistent across municipalities. So I'll, I'll answer it from two perspectives, one being, um, the general litigation perspective, and then another being, um, litigation that's covered by our insurance policies. We have an administrative authority bylaw, which essentially delegates authority to staff for various things. Um, that is not unusual. It's very common for municipalities to delegate, um, and it's provided for in the municipal act, uh, for councils to have that ability. Under our administrative authority bylaw, general litigation, which is managed by, um, the legal services divi- department, um, legal services has authority to settle under a certain threshold. Typically, our legal services does bring, um, any high dollar value, um, litigation to council for approval. E- even, uh, speaking from my practice personally, um, even when the settlement does not exceed, um, the limit that we have in our administrative authority bylaw, very often, um, legal services will still bring any settlement of any significance to council for approval. It is common practice, not only in municipalities, but generally, um, amongst lawyers who practice in the area of litigation, that when you settle a matter, you include confidentiality provisions. Um, so I'm not sure that we would have, you, you know, in the past, when legal services comes to, um, settle a matter, we wouldn't, we would seek authority and direction to settle it. We wouldn't even necessarily write in there, um, and authority to it, to settle, um, to sign off a, a confidentiality, because it's simply so standard, um, in relation to any settlement. In relation to settlements of insurance-related matters, um, which are anything to which assurance, uh, in a policy of insurance applies, whether or not, um, the matter is resolved when, within or outside of a deductible. Our administrative authority bylaw also provides authority for settlement of those proceedings. Um, and so you, we would look there, and we would have authority to settle based on the limits that are contained in that, in that bylaw, the council approved bylaw, and it is standard practice that every agreement, every settlement of any insured claim, uh, small, medium, large, doesn't matter, contains a confidentiality provision in it. It is, it is simply standard, uh, practice amongst lawyers, and certainly standard practice amongst, in the insurance bar, and certainly standard practice amongst municipalities to do that. Uh, none of that, there's, there's nothing unusual, any, any of that. Um, and then I, I think what I would add to that is, um, there's a reason why municipalities, uh, pass bylaws that delegate authority to staff to do things, and that is because, especially for a municipal, municipality the size of the city of Brampton, uh, it would be unmanageable for council to be faced with, um, every, a, a requirement to come with a report to settle each and every single piece of litigation, um, that a municipality has, particularly the insurance litigation. So, uh, that's, that's the information, the general information and advice that I can give you in response to your question, and I hope that assists.
Just lost you through you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much, and, and, and I think it was, it was good for us. Now, in a case where, such as, I guess, the case we were discussing, where insurance is the one that's responsible, uh, for it, so essentially, they're leading the case, if I'm not, like, eh, you know what I'm saying? So the insurance company, they're responsible for, and I know what, you know, the monies that we spent was the deductible, which covered by the. that we spent was the deductible, which covered by the insurance. But help me understand, so when the insurance company is covering it, do we have the last say, or is it the insurance company?
So, through the chair, I can't speak to any specific matter, but from a general perspective, generally, if a matter, if we have a claim and a matter is under the deductible, generally, our internal staff will largely manage that. The insurers won't care as much about them. So we have to report everything to our insurers. Anything that happens on a claim, we report, but we generally, they generally usually permit us to run them, depending upon whether or not there's an assessment that that particular claim is likely to exceed our deductible. Where there's an assessment that it's likely to exceed our deductible, then they'll want to have more of a hand in it. If it's not likely to exceed it, then, you know, they'll generally allow us to manage it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Counsel Maderos. Just had, Counsel Palleschi, if you're blessed, you want to follow up on what he was. Diane, you said that it's standard practice for nondisclosure agreements across municipalities. Are there any other municipalities that you've spoken to where there's a nondisclosure agreement signed for a sexual assault against an elected official?
Through the chair, well, to the chair. I haven't spoken to any other municipalities, but I have spoken to external legal counsel who practice primarily in this area and do so for municipalities, and I can confirm, based on information and advice I've received from them, that it is standard.
So you're telling me that there could be other cities where there's nondisclosure agreements covering up sexual assaults to city councilors?
To the, to the chair? I can't confirm that, and that is not what I said.
I have to say, this is, it's sort of a flippant comment, saying that it's standard practice. Just, Counsel Palleschi, I'll leave that there, but the other comment from Counsel Maderos is, is Counsel Maderos said insurance covered this? Just to be clear, I had heard from the CEO that taxpayers did, so, did insurance cover this?
To the, to the, to the chair. I can not comment upon any, any specific litigation here.
So you do not verify that insurance, to just be clear?
No, I was speaking generally.
Okay, good. I don't want anyone to think this was covered, when the information from the whistleblower said it was taxpayers. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, Diane, if we, if we kind of take the current sexual assault against the counselor out of the equation, and I say to you, how do we not protect councilors going forward? Councilors that want to have the same sexual assaults against their victims? How do we not protect members of council? What is the wording that we need in a motion to not protect members of council that want to cause sexual assault on people? How do we do that?
Through the chair, to Counsel Palleschi. If you want to refer that back to staff, we can certainly think about that and provide your report back. However, I think what I would say is that a member of council who engages in the type of conduct that you're referring to, they're not protected by the city. We don't protect them. And that already applies.
Okay, but there is a protection in terms of an NDA, and that, and NDAs have not... NDAs, this one specifically, can you just lower it a little bit, so I'm not hearing you? This NDA specifically never came to council. And if it had come to council two years ago, I think we'd be in a different situation. So how do we, going forward, ensure that not only do, if a counselor's conduct engages in sexual assault, that comes to council for any nondisclosures or anything that, for information to members of council? In a public setting?
Through the chair, to Counsel Palleschi. I think I understand your question. And if I can rephrase it in a way that I can answer it, what you're asking me is, is there a way for this, for the city council to require staff in the future to bring forward certain types of claims, so that they are subject to council approval? Is that fair?
Yes, absolutely.
Then my answer to that would be that we could do an amendment to the administrative authority bylaw that has an exception, and that exception can be more explicit, and can identify certain types of claims that you would want to have brought to city council for settlement approval. That is, I think, the manner in which you could address that situation.
I think it's a further discussion, because I'd also like to get into the fact of, you know, victims being silenced at any level within the organization, and, and how do we ensure that those victims, you know, it's one thing to say if a victim doesn't want, you know, things to get out because of, for whatever reason. I know it's a delicate situation, but, you know, we're always, and Counsel Santos, I might lean on you a little bit here, because you're, because you know more about the campaigns that we've been involved with, but trying to encourage, not encourage, trying to empower women to be able to feel like they, they can and they are heard, is the level that we're, where we need to be at. So I think it's that, it's that balance, and I, and I would like to have that further discussion, to see what we can do to ensure that, you know, it's not only the councilors, councilors first, because we're in this situation, but, you know, we need to go to commissioners and anybody that's in that, that power, power role across the organization.
Through the chair, to Counsel Palleschi, my recommendation would be to refer it to staff, and we can bring you back a report to address those things.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't think any member of council here today, when they made their oath of office, ever felt that if they were to behave badly in some way, and this is perhaps the most egregious way that one can misbehave, that they would be protected by, by default, by the corporation. This matter that we have been dealing with now for a few years has been in the open, in the media, talked about quite a bit in detail. And the crux of the issue here, and the reason why we're discussing this today, is because fundamentally, council was never consulted on a matter that is of utmost importance and concern, not just to us, but to the residents of the city, who have been grappling with this issue since they first heard about it. Never in my life would I assume that if I behaved in some terrible manner, would the city try to cloak me, or to, to try to obscure information that the public have a right to know about my behavior? I understand, we all understand, that when we are in the public, everything that we do is under the full light and transparency. And I think that there should be no assumption, in any case like this, where a nondisclosure agreement is, is allowed without councils' express permission. It should not be permitted. And so if, if this does become a referral to staff to come back with ways and means in which we can have a better process, more clarity around how we deal with this case, keeping in mind that the province itself is reviewing how, how members of council are dealt with, particularly in situations, the most egregious type of situations, and how integrity commissioners and, and councils can deal with the most extreme cases. We need to tighten this, because staff should have known, they should have known that they needed to come to us on this one. It's a no-brainer. And, like, staff knew that we have been dealing with this since the very first day. It's a very difficult file. There are, there are members of council involved, our reputations are wrapped up in it, the victim who was affected by it is wrapped up in it, as is the reputation of the city. This was, after all, an economic development foray into Turkey, and it went off the rails horribly. So I think that it's unfortunate that we are here, but this should never happen again. There never should be any ambiguity that when something like this happens, that it should be this council that makes a decision on how to make a settlement like this. And the default should not be to cover up. The default should be to release and make information public. So if we can do it in that way, Mayor, and if, following Diana's recommendations, I'm happy to second this and have staff come back with, again, ways and means for us to achieve that. Thank you.
This can't be right. Look at my sheet. Counsel Fortini, for the eighth time?
No, it's not the eighth time. It's the second. It was, it's the first time on this. So, thank you. So I guess we're sending it back to staff to come back with more details?
You could do a motion, this motion just seems...
Well, that's what Counsel Visante said, sending it back to staff, right? Is that what he said? Yeah.
How was the advice?
Yeah, so, you know, I'm, you know, so we look at only one thing here, sexual assault, like, you know, because it's a situation that happened, but we can look at other subsidies, impaired, and these are the, all the things. If the city's involved, if you're on a wave by yourself, and the city has no part of it, they would have nothing to do with the city, at the end. It's a personal matter. Am I correct? The city would not be named. So if we're going to send it back, and we want to look at one thing, we should add a little bit more things on it. And I know the province is working on, actually, they can remove a council. They're working on something to bring forward, changing the codes, to remove a council, actually, if you did something wrong. So it's not like on the Code of Conduct, you might, you maximum have 90-day suspension. They could actually be removed. So they're working on something, too. So I'd like to have it sent back, but I'd like to add more than just sexual assault, you know, bullying, you know, impaired, substances, anything we can think of, which we should set an example. Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, just for clarity. So I know Counsel Visante, we have down as the second ear for this motion. So Counsel Visante, because you did mention sending it back to staff, do you wish to refer it back, or is Counsel Fortini?
I would say for this one, we can do a separate motion, but this one is pretty clear. We could ask for additional information for delegated authority, or whatever counsel decides, but I think this motion is very clear. And if at some point council wants to add other criminal items that the city was sued for, go ahead, but my motion is, is pretty clear, this is in regards, just to make sure it's very clear, that we cannot be, include in NDAs on sexual assault settlements that we have not consented to.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor. If that council would send it back to staff, that's what we're supporting.
So you can do, you can do another motion to that effect, to send something back to council, but this one...
You said on this, just one item? Only one item?
Sexual assaults.
Well, we should add more, like, anything to do with criminal, I think, we have to say.
Would you take it as a friendly amendment, criminal, criminal settlements?
Yeah, well, where you caught in anything elsewhere, you know, it doesn't have to be criminal. This one's not criminal.
Yeah.
This was not criminal, so it doesn't have to be criminal. You know, some, you know, assault charge is not criminal.
Yeah.
Not criminal, you're not removed. Unless you, well, you can have a criminal record, you're not removed. It depends what, what criminal, under what section. You don't get removed on the criminal.
Peter, you want some clarification?
Here.
Through you, through you, Mr. Mayor. I would, I would defer to others that are more legally inclined than I am, but there are provisions in the municipal act that if a member, in the course of their office, is incarcerated, they're immediately removed from office, but I can't speak about past practices and past experiences.
So under impaired, it's a criminal offense. Why, how come they don't get removed? It depends, I think, what you fall under. Still a criminal record, still criminal. Diane?
Through the, through the chair, to Counsel Fortini. So I think, I'm not sure that we would be signing nondisclosure agreements in relation to a criminal offense, because we don't really deal with criminal matters here. They would be civil matters that we would be dealing with, and for which we might have a confidentiality agreement of some sort.
Because that's up to the courts?
Because that would be...
Okay.
In criminal matters, criminal matters are generally public matters unless they become the subject of a civil proceeding.
Thank you very much. Through you, Mr. Mayor. Just following up on what Counsel Visante had been asking as well. Diana, I don't think there's anybody here that disagrees with this, but we do have to have the process for putting this in place. And the process is what you were saying, send it back to your group, they will come back with all the various things, the administrative bylaws, the, the terms of reference, everything that needs to be changed. By passing something like this, we're saying we want it passed, but we're not telling staff how we want it to be implemented. You need to come back and tell us all the areas that it needs to be implemented. Am I correct?
Yes, that would, that would be my recommendation. Referring it back would give us a chance to think it through, provide you with a recommendation that is proper, and will comply with, you know, all the legal considerations. And, you know, passing a resolution like this, my, my concern might be that staff, I mean, if you have a standalone resolution in a, in a bylaw that really is confirmed by confirming bylaw, you know, you need staff, how are staff ever going to remember that it's in place, that it exists? But if you build it into your administrative authority bylaw, that's really the best practice, because then it's the one place that staff always go to when they want to see, do they have authority to do what it is they're doing? And it's really good practice for a municipality to consolidate, you know, where municipalities have multiple delegation bylaws, it's very cumbersome, and you're always looking all around everywhere and hoping you haven't missed anything. So it's, you know, in Brampton, we actually have a consolidated one, which is really wonderful. And so I think, you know, Peter and I and others here, whenever there's a discussion about administrative authority, we always talk about amending the administrative authority bylaw for that very reason. So my recommendation would be that we do it, you know, properly, and, and my advice that is properly would be to do it as an amendment to the administrative authority bylaw.
Okay, so if we were to just refer this back to you to come back, how quickly can you come back with?
I can try to come back for next week, but if not...
By Wednesday?
I can try to come back for Wednesday, and if, but if not Wednesday, I can certainly come back for the September meeting.
Okay, well, I'm prepared, I'm prepared to do that, send it back, and if you can bring it back to Wednesday's meeting, that's great. And do we need to put anything in place as of right now, so that if... Okay, I'm happy with, I'm happy with referring it back to your department. Yes. Yep, referred back to staff. She can go back Wednesday.
You saying that in the motion?
The word is okay, just going to refer back to how we can get it into the bylaws.
So we can have this done by Wednesday? We have to have a process for it.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So a referral motion is a procedural motion, so it doesn't require a second ear? If a second ear wishes to be added, that's fine? So through you, Mr. Mayor. So now we're in a referral debate, if members wish to speak for or against the referral?
I don't see any speakers to this. All in favor? Motion carries. Can we take a five-minute break, just to look at how much left we have on the calendar?
Sorry.
I know, I was just going to speak to everyone about that.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, if, if council wishes to take a break, that's fine, a recess, my strong advice will be that council should pass a confirming bylaw now, just in case.
So what I've heard from a number of members of council, that we should adjourn until Wednesday, I just want to have, uh, two minutes to speak to everyone, to see if that's the wish? Yeah, eh, do the confirming bylaw.
Finish the council...
So, five-minute break, let me talk to council. Okay, guys, guys, five, five-minute break, five-minute break, okay, ten-minute break. Long day, and, uh, after speaking to members of council, um, we are going to do the confirming bylaw, the declaration of vacancy, and then the remainder of items will go on the Wednesday agenda. So, to our city clerk, in what order would you like to do that?
So through you, Mr. Mayor, I'd suggest first we do just a confirming bylaw, just to confirm the decisions made by council up until this point.
Okay, motion moved by Counselor Santos, seconded by Counselor Willens. For the confirming bylaw, anyone opposed? Hearing none, motion carries.
And, eh, if then council wishes to proceed with the declarations of vac- declaration of vacancy report, which is item 10.2.1 on the agenda?
And there's no action taken in the declaration of vacancy report, is there?
All, all, the, the only action through you, Mr. Mayor, is just to actually declare the seat vacant.
Good, so everyone's on the same page.
And we'll just, we'll bring it up in a moment, we're just... So the motion for 10.2.1 is on the screen, the staff recommendation that as a result of the, of vacancy...
Yeah, happy to move it, Counselor Maderos, seconded. Anyone opposed? Hearing none, the motion is carried. And we need a motion adjourned?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, we should do another confirming bylaw, just to confirm the decisions up to this point.
Another confirming bylaw, moved by Counselor Maderos, seconded by Counselor Singh. Anyone opposed? Hearing none, motion carries.
Then, we'll just wait for that one to come up, and then, after that, the, I guess the other, sorry, we already deferred everything to the August 10th meeting, uh, it would then just be adjournment.
Counselor Maderos moved adjourn, adjournment, we declared vacant. Seconded by Counselor Willens, and we will return on, on Wednesday, and deal with everything 1612 onwards. The last item we dealt with was 1611.
Yep. So thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, this meeting is now adjourned, there will be an, another meeting of city council on Wednesday, August 10th, and with, uh, some additional new business, plus business deferred from this meeting, we're just going to wait...